Hafedé. El Comité de Salud, tierras, justicia y cultura ha llamado a orden el día de hoy, el lunes 6 de febrero de 2023, el tiempo es aproximadamente las 5:06 p.m. En cumplimiento con la ley de gobierno abierta, notificaciones para... Perdón, son las 5:02 p.m. Notificaciones para este escenario público se publicaron en el periódico Daily Post y en el sitio web de la Gobernación pública de Guam, el lunes 30 de enero y el viernes 3 de febrero de 2023. Y este escenario está siendo transmitido en el canal de YouTube de la legislatura de Guam. También se difundieron notificaciones por correo electrónico a todos los senadores y a todos los medios principales de transmisión en esas mismas fechas. Las reglas generales de conducta de esta noche son que los testigos primero serán reconocidos por la presidenta antes de hablar y comienzan al decir su nombre para mantener el registro. Por supuesto, todos los individuos estarán sujetos a preguntas o comentarios por mis colegas también. Me gustaría reconocer a mis colegas, el senador Chris Barnett, quien nos acompaña esta noche. Gracias, senador, y el senador Jesse Lujan, senador de la cama de Dusmasi. Tenemos un tema de agenda para nuestro escenario a las 5 de la tarde y tenemos otro escenario a las 6 p.m. Así que el tema de escenario a las 5 de la tarde es para el proyecto número 13-37 COR, presentado por mí misma, Teresa Terlahi. Es un acto para amendar la sección 83.102 d y agregar una nueva 83.116 al capítulo 83, todo el título 12 del Código Guam anotado relativo a la aumentación de la notificación pública y la transparencia de las acciones del Comité de Salud de Guam 21º Century que se encargó de la propuesta de campus de atención médica. El escenario a las 6 p.m. se anunciará a ese tiempo, pero ese es el proyecto número 12-37, y eso se refiere a requerir la aprobación previa de la legislatura antes de comprar o entrar en una leasing, licencia o subleasing de propiedad propiedad del gobierno federal, gobierno extranjero o subentidades de ella para un plazo más de cinco años. Así que comenzaremos con el proyecto número 13-37. Este proyecto fue presentado el 24 de enero de 2023 y seguidamente se referió el 25 de enero de 2023 al Comité. Como patrocinador, voy a dar una introducción del proyecto. El proyecto pretende crear transparencia para aquellos responsables de la propuesta de campus de atención médica a través de tres provisiones que primero incluirían la representación en el Comité de la Sociedad de Medicina de Guam y la Asociación de Medicina de Guam, así como representantes de los consejos de planificación municipal afectados y la legislatura de Guam. En segundo lugar, aplicaría los requisitos de gobierno abierto en el capítulo 5 GCA al Comité y permitirá al público asistir a las reuniones. En tercer lugar, aseguraría que los registros de deliberación y decisiones sean disponibles para el público. Para ilustrar la necesidad de estas medidas, me gustaría dar un resumen de la línea de tiempo de este proyecto así como los esfuerzos realizados por el Comité de Salud. La ley pública 35-58 fue una ley que fue aprobada para establecer una fuerza laboral hospitalera por el nombre de Espetata Linalata Task Force. Consistía en nueve miembros, administrador de GIDA, administrador del hospital, el parlamento o miembro designado de la legislatura, appointado por el parlamento, un miembro general público con experiencia en negocios y financiación en la desarrollo de una unidad hospitalaria pública o privada appointada por el gobernador, miembro del Departamento de Gestión de las Tierras, comité de revisión de la aplicación, appointado por el gobernador, el miembro general público appointado por el parlamento, presidente del comité legislativo con jurisdicción sobre la salud o designado y el líder minoritario de la legislatura o designado. Esa fue la Espetata Linalata Task Force o la fuerza laboral hospitalera. Ley 35-58. En marzo de 2021, el gobernador anunció su intención de construir un nuevo hospital y otras instalaciones de salud pública. En octubre de ese mismo año, la legislatura aprobó la Ley 36-56, que fue firmada por el gobernador. Estableció un Comité de Salud de Centro, llamado el Comité de Salud de Centro 21º. Y fue autorizado... Bueno, el proyecto, la ley autorizó al gobierno de Guam a entrar en un contrato para el diseño, construcción, financiación, leasing, transferencia y mantenimiento a largo plazo del centro de atención médica de Guam 21º, con contratistas del sector privado que pueden proporcionar financiación a largo plazo. La construcción del campus de atención médica propuesto actualmente se estima a costar uno billón de dólares. El Comité de Salud de Centro 21º, en acuerdo con esa ley pública, debía ser dirigido por el administrador o diputado de GIDA. Incluye al administrador y directores de todas las agencias de atención médica, el director o diputado de Public Works, director o diputado de gestión de tierras, director o diputado de BSP, director o diputado de BBMR y director o diputado de DOA. Así que fue un poco diferente a la fuerza laboral anterior que fue creada. Hemos estado siguiendo este proyecto, por supuesto, con gran interés porque la legislatura en la Ley 36-56 estaba en total apoyo a la construcción de un nuevo hospital y financiando un nuevo hospital. Fue un oversight en noviembre de 2021 con la Comisión de Tierras de Guam y el Departamento de Gestión de las Tierras acerca de la obligación de Guam a los propietarios ancestrales cuando se transfiere o se considera exceso. Y tuvimos otro en octubre de 2022, específicamente sobre la ubicación propuesta del nuevo hospital, así como contratos pertenecientes al campus de atención médica propuesto. Éramos y todavía somos... Bueno, éramos incapaces durante ese... En el tiempo de esos escenarios de oversight para localizar minutos o notificaciones públicas para las reuniones del Comité de Salud de Centro 21º después de noviembre de 2021. Noticias fueron recogidas para las reuniones relacionadas con el campus de atención médica y actualizaciones generales sobre el estado de acciones en las reuniones de dirección de GIDA. Y esas señalan reuniones clave entre Matrix, el oficina de la Línea de Defensa de la Comunidad y el oficio del gobernador. GIDA ha lanzado un sitio web ahora, recientemente, llamado el sitio web del campus de atención médica. Incluye los highlights del comité de dirección y extiende hasta octubre de 2021. Y las grabaciones video se extienden hasta noviembre de 2021. De acuerdo con los informes encontrados en los minutos de reuniones de GIDA regular del comité, la fuerza laboral de atención médica ha continuado a reunirse de forma regular desde su primera reunión virtual realizada el 24 de marzo de 2021 para lanzar la fuerza laboral. De nuevo, esto es incómodo si se refiere a la fuerza laboral original o al Comité de Salud de Centro 21º. A veces, esto no es claro. Sin embargo, fue claro que continuaron a reunirse de forma regular. No hay notas de reuniones de la fuerza laboral de atención médica publicadas de los comités de dirección o subcomités después de octubre 14 de 2021, incluyendo... o en ese sitio web del campus de atención médica de Guam. Sin embargo, los informes del comité de dirección de GIDA de propiedad real y del Comité de Salud después de noviembre de 2021 y hasta agosto de 2022 incluyen fechas de reuniones relacionadas con el campus de atención médica y actualizaciones generales sobre el estado de acciones y informes. Así que el Comité de Tierras realizó tres oversights en total el 8 de abril de 2021, noviembre 18 de 2021 y octubre 18 de 2022. Los propietarios de tierras testificaron que no habían sido notificados o sentían que se pasaba por el proceso de planificación y construcción del nuevo campus de atención médica en sus tierras ancestrales. Muchos propietarios ancestrales y sus familias han presentado con afirmaciones... Y esas afirmaciones y preocupaciones fueron presentadas a mi oficina. Así que enviamos un total de cinco solicitudes de libertad de información separadas en octubre 21, abril 22, junio 2022, octubre 2022 y noviembre 2022 a dos ramas ejecutivas, incluyendo agencias, para buscar información sobre este campus de atención médica. La FOIA no dio ningún documento indicando especificidad sobre los acuerdos con el gobierno federal acerca de la decisión de entrar en una leasing de 99 años ni ningún documento mostrando que la propiedad permanecería en el inventario de activos federales si un hospital no se construyera allí. Estábamos buscando esos porque eran afirmaciones que se hicieron en los medios. Además, entraron contratos con la corporación de desarrollo de Matrix que entró bajo... a GIDA anunciando en mayo de 2021 que había acordado pagar su contratante actual, Matrix, 1,48 millones de dólares en fondos federales para completar nueve órdenes de trabajo acerca del campus de atención médica, que incluía estimaciones de costos actualizadas y examinación de sitios alternativos y qué debería pasar con el hospital actual cuando se construye un nuevo. El contrato de Matrix con GIDA fue entrado en mayo de 2014 para hacer servicios solicitados bajo RFP 14-008 para servicios de consultas profesionales de multidisciplina para la investigación, el plan y la implementación de iniciativas de desarrollo económico y oportunidades económicas. Incluye, bajo esta nueva fuerza laboral de mayo 2021... Perdón, tarea... órdenes de trabajo, nueve tareas. Una de estas tareas fue revisar y analizar el... actualizar el informe de la fuerza laboral de centros de atención médica de Guam 2016, que discute el papel futuro del hospital en la atención médica. Preparar un documento blanco que discute todos los factores que podrían tener un impacto significativo en la capacidad de proporcionar atención médica y pública. Esto parece haberse completado, o lo encontramos en el sitio web. Hay otra orden de trabajo, sin embargo, que habla de preparar un plan de campus de atención médica usando los hallazgos de otras tareas. Y recomienda una ubicación preferida. Así que este... Hay un plan de master en el sitio web con una recomendación. Pero parte de esta orden de trabajo fue proporcionar sitios alternativos para el campus de atención médica. Dar al menos dos presentaciones a los políticos y hospedar al menos dos foros para las industrias de salud médica y pública antes de agosto de 2022. Éstos no pudimos localizar en el sitio web. El proyecto es básicamente para evitar la necesidad del público de tener que pasar por las FOIAS o, ya sabes, buscar estas informaciones sobre un gran proyecto que se está llevando a cabo y solo para asegurar que este trabajo o este comité, es un comité de atención médica, va a llevar sus procedimientos bajo la ley de gobierno abierto y que incluirá a estos miembros de la profesión médica. Algunos de ellos han dado nuestra atención que sus oficinas están localizadas en Tumooning y que deberían tener una palabra sobre lo que va a ocurrir o dónde se construirá el nuevo hospital, qué estará incluido en él. Y así les proporcionaría ese tipo de oportunidad. Así que enviamos invitaciones a Guam Memorial Hospital, que se negó a asistir o la necesidad de testificar. También invitamos a GIDA y quiero agradecer al director por estar aquí. Y si puede acompañarnos aquí, por favor. También invitamos al Consejo de Gobernación de Guam a presentar testimonios a la Sociedad de Medicina de Guam y la Asociación de Medicina de Guam. Me gustaría, antes de empezar con el testimonio, reconocer la asistencia de nuestro senador Sabina Pérez. Gracias, senador Pérez. Bien, también tenemos otras personas inscritas para testificar. Y recibimos una carta ahora mismo. El Departamento de Gestión de las Tierras defiende comentarios, testimonios o acciones en el proyecto 12 y el proyecto 13 al oficio del gobernador. Así que están defiriendo al oficio del gobernador. Bien, también hemos inscrito al señor Kenyon Guerrero, Nancy Aquino. Pueden acompañarnos aquí, quiero decir, en la mesa. El señor Juan Tenorio, el señor Vincent Flores Cabrera, el señor Peter Manabusin. ¿Está Nancy Aquino aquí? Oh, ¿quería testificar? Bien. Peter Manabusin. Mary Camacho, ¿quería testificar? Bien, y el director. Bien, muchas gracias. Bien, comenzaremos con el director. Muchas gracias, director, por estar aquí hoy. Y usted puede proceder.
Hafedé, madame presidenta, miembros de la legislatura de tierras del 37º Guam y honrables senadores, también es mi primera vez apareciendo ante nuestros dos nuevos senadores y así te agradezco y espero trabajar con usted. Hafedé, mi nombre es Melanie Mendiola. Soy la administradora de la Autoridad Económica de Guam y estoy aquí para testificar por el proyecto 13-37 y aquí para expresar mi... No diría que no estamos en apoyo, no estamos en oposición, solo estamos un poco lujúco sobre el proyecto, pero quiero decir que creo que te haré claro de qué estamos lujúcos y de lo demás. Así que solo mirando, leyendo el lenguaje del proyecto, el administrador o diputado administrador están en cargo y te agradezco. GIDA quiere ser el jefe, o, ya sabes, yo quiero ser el jefe. No sé sobre Carlos, nuestro diputado administrador. También incluyeron, continúan articulando agencias de atención médica, DPW, DLM. En la gran reunión de la fuerza laboral de atención médica, estas agencias ya están incluidas y aparecen a las reuniones de forma regular. No vemos problemas con un miembro del consejo de planificación municipal o consejos si hay varios sitios que están siendo examinados. Y también no vemos ningún problema con incluir a la Sociedad de Medicina de Guam o miembros de la Asociación de Medicina de Guam. Actualmente, los dos que sirven, creo, son el Dr. Jolene Uggan y el Dr. Annie Bordalio. También tenemos al Dr. Lombard, quien también participó en las reuniones y otros aquí y allá durante el tiempo en el planificación. Pero respecto a las insinuaciones de que esto no ha sido un proceso transparente como un miembro activo y probablemente un miembro relativamente muy activo, diría, en el proceso, me gustaría aclarar lo que creo que son muchas las misconceptiones. Pero después de escuchar al parlamento sobre dónde está la confusión, realmente entiendo de dónde viene esto. Así que creo que podemos llegar a... Creo que puedo ayudar a aclararlo hoy. Así que el gobernador llamó a su primera reunión de planificación hospitalera e invitó a miembros de Espetata, así como miembros adicionales de la comunidad así como de su gabinete a asistir. Ella compartió su visión de una instalación de atención médica moderna colocado y pidió nuestra participación. El 27 de abril fue la segunda reunión y esa fue la primera reunión que GIDA organizó. Por lo tanto, grabamos la reunión en Zoom y luego de la primera noticia de la reunión que fue enviada, la enviamos, no la enumeramos en el documento. Y también incluimos un enlace en este invitado y cualquier invitación consecuente a una página que contó todos los estudios, todos los estudios relacionados con el sistema de atención médica de Guam desde al menos una década, así como cualquier nota de reuniones adicionales o documentos de apoyo de la reunión pasada, en caso de que se perdiera una reunión. Así que estas reuniones fueron a continuación, la gran dirección, supongo, como un comité de dirección, reunión de grupo de trabajo y luego reuniones subcomités. Había tres subcomités, tierra infraestructura, financiación y servicios médicos. Tierra infraestructura fue dirigida por el director de DLM, director Joe Borja. Financiación fue dirigida por GIDA y servicios médicos fue dirigido por Guam Memorial Hospital. Las reuniones que estaban taking place estaban rodeando diversos temas, pero principalmente cada subcomité informaría. Y, por supuesto, al principio, puedo... Estoy segura, ciertamente creo que todos pueden entender que estamos tratando de encontrar nuestras maneras y qué tomamos nota, qué no tomamos nota. GIDA era de facto administración, ya sabes, fuimos los trabajadores de facto en esto. Así que dijimos, oh, vamos a tomar notas de todo y de esa manera siempre está disponible y de esa manera nadie nos pregunta, ya sabes, ¿por qué no está disponible? Así que empezamos a hacer eso. Y así, si escuchas los reproducciones, creo que es la reunión de noviembre de 2021, que es la última reunión que hay... Hay una reproducción, una reproducción de Zoom. Y eso fue el grupo de consultores de Matrix, del cual el parlamento mencionó antes, fue seleccionado para llevar a cabo el plan de acción médica. También fueron los consultores seleccionados para llevar a cabo el plan de acción médica original en la administración anterior. Así que sentimos que era bueno para ellos actualizar lo que ya habían hecho además de estos ajustes solicitados al proyecto. Así que los consultores seleccionados articularon lo que estaban planeando hacer. Querían hacer... Hicieron actualizaciones de encuesta. Así que hubo una encuesta de proveedores médicos y quieren, repitiendo eso. Se pasó el tiempo con los hospitalistas y el personal de GMH, reuniones de planificación, reuniones con la salud pública, reuniones con el Centro de Salud y Bienestar de Behavio de Guam. No les pedimos que nos muestren las notas. Sentimos que ese fue el propósito del plan, fue que toman sus notas, hacen todo el trabajo ocupado y luego nos presentan el proyecto final. Y así como algunos estudios urbanos, control de tráfico en tres sitios específicos. Así que a partir de la reunión de noviembre, habíamos tenido un número de reuniones regulares y subcomités, y para ser completamente honestos, estas reuniones se estaban volviendo un poco improductivas y stale. Nadie aparecía y los que aparecían fueron GIDA porque estábamos... Nosotros nos considerábamos el personal en la reunión y el presidente de DLM aparecería a sus reuniones y así sucesivamente. Pero el grupo llegó a una parada natural y mucho de ello se debe al hecho de que teníamos un contratante pagado para llevar a cabo mucho de este trabajo. Así que dijimos, está bien, esperaremos y les daremos una actualización a una fecha posterior. El consultor hospitalario, así que Matrix también contrató un grupo llamado Atriax Group, que llegó a Guam en noviembre de 2021. A ese tiempo, el servicio médico, específicamente el subcomité de servicios médicos, estaba reengajado para ayudar con la comunicación a los proveedores porque claramente, si eres un interesado, recibes un correo electrónico de algún loco en los Estados Unidos, no vas a responder necesariamente, pero si recibes un correo electrónico del Dr. Jolene o del Dr. Annie, entonces quizás estés más inclinado a responder, de GIDA, cualquiera. Así que fue cuando hubo algún reengaje, aunque no estuvimos conveniendose. Y ciertamente puedo entender la confusión que el parlamento informó con el espacio muerto que ocurrió en 2022. La Propiedad Real, la razón por la que está en el Comité de Propiedad Real es porque el Comité de Propiedad Real de GIDA posee, aloja a la gente que yo encargué de la formación del plan de acción médica. Y queríamos que el público supiera que las cosas todavía estaban pasando, aunque el grupo grande aún no había llegado a unirse. Así que hubo reuniones individuales que ocurrieron. Había reuniones que discutían, bueno, ¿cuál es la próxima iteración de los préstamos que vamos a tratar de perseguir? ¿Qué pasa con el VA y así sucesivamente? Pero nada formal, no nos unimos porque estábamos esperando el plan de acción médica y eso, ya sabes, cuando miras a fondo, pienso a mí mismo, tal vez deberíamos haber tenido una reunión en abril o mayo de 2022, solo para un "hola, toque de espacio, cómo está todo el mundo". En ese momento, GIDA como un tipo de ayudante de facto en este plan, realmente no tomamos eso. No tomamos esa iniciativa para llamar a una reunión, lo que es por lo que dije, es que es bueno que me estés haciendo el jefe ahora, así que puedo hacerlo. Pero también estuvimos ocupados haciendo Leap, estábamos haciendo cuidado infantil, estábamos haciendo todas las cosas que escuchas de GIDA haciendo. Y creo que es ciertamente comprensible que GIDA estuviera bastante ocupada. Pero una cosa que surgió es... la... Una cosa que surgió durante este tipo de espacio muerto fue la preocupación que tiene que ver con los propietarios originales de Eagles Field. Como residente de Manila, esto es algo que tomé muy en serio. Y así nos reunimos con las familias originales de los propietarios en la oficina principal para arrepentirnos, y el gobernador nos ordenó, cuando digo "nos", quiero decir GIDA y la Comisión de Tierras de Guam, reunirse con las familias individuales. Y la razón por la que quieres reunirte con las familias individuales es porque no todos tienen... No todos son presentes en un foro público como este, ¿verdad? O como opinados como las personas sentadas aquí, incluyendo a mí misma. Así que nos reunimos con ellos. Tenemos notas sobre eso. Nunca hemos liberado las notas sobre eso porque, a cierta medida, queremos proteger la privacidad de estos individuos. Dicho esto, quiero decir, en realidad hicimos una decisión consciente. ¿Deberíamos poner las notas de esas reuniones individuales en nuestro plan de acción médica o nuestro sitio web de campus de atención médica? Dijimos, no, vamos a mantenerlo en Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Manténlo en GIDA durante el tiempo que venga, ¿verdad? Y luego, después de esa reunión, nos reunimos con la Comisión de Tierras de Guam Ancestral, el oficio del gobernador, GIDA y nos reunimos para llegar a la reforma del Banco de Tierras de 2022, que presentamos, que llamamos a todos los propietarios ancestrales de vuelta y los presentamos de nuevo en 2022. Fue cubierto por el PDN, pero no fue una reunión pública, tienes razón. Fue una reunión solo con los propietarios ancestrales de Guam. Y lo que les pedimos, lo que les pedimos fue, desde mi lado de la mesa, mirando la cronología de los documentos pasando de un lado a otro, probablemente para mí el mejor recurso, y dejaré esto aquí, es una carta para iluminar al entonces congresista Mike San Nicholas, que hace preguntas sobre tierras excesivas y retorno y así sucesivamente. Y pasamos por todas las fases diferentes y todas las discusiones que hemos tenido y los diferentes documentos asociados con el retorno. Como... Trabajando con el gobernador, para mí, no creo que el retorno de Eagles Field sea inminente. Cuando digo inminente, significa durante la vida de estos individuos. ¿Podría pasar algún día, tal vez? ¿Vamos a trabajar hacia ello? Por supuesto que lo harán. Trataremos la justicia para todos los propietarios ancestrales. Pero este terreno no estaba enumerado como tierras excesivas. Este terreno estaba enumerado como underutilizado en una lista de antiguos días. Pero porque no estaba enumerado como exceso, estábamos trabajando... Porque esto era una leasing, lo que dijimos fue que tenemos que encontrar, tenemos que encontrar justicia para estos propietarios ancestrales, así que lo hicimos de la mejor manera que pudimos, que en el mundo de GIDA es a través de compensación a valor de mercado. Y ahí es donde GIDA entró y GIDA dijo, está bien, tenemos que trabajar con... Bueno, veamos en la Comisión de Tierras de Guam. ¿Por qué no han pagado un centavo en los últimos 20...? GLC ha estado en el negocio durante más de 20 años. No han pagado un centavo a un propietario ancestral, no Eagles Field, ningún propietario ancestral. Y así dijimos, este proyecto tiene que ser corregido. Y no creo que la reforma del Banco de Tierras de 2023, que reintrodujimos este año, sea perfecta y ciertamente podría utilizar tu espejo, el discurso de la gente en esta sala. Pero fue lo mejor que pudimos hacer. Creo que fue lo mejor que pudimos想得出来, que podría construir un campus de atención médica que beneficia a muchos y no es ideal para unos pocos, pero es lo mejor que podemos hacer para los pocos. Pero en cualquier caso, digreso sobre esa parte porque lo que me resultó evidente en la fuerza laboral de campus de la medicina de Guam fue que tierra infraestructura, financiación, servicios médicos, esos son solo tres áreas de un proyecto muy complejo, enorme. Y tienes diferentes partes y creo que fue iluminado muy claramente por la madame presidenta cuando dijo, bueno, las notas de GIDA dicen esto, pero la de Guam Ancestral dice esto y así sucesivamente. Así que ciertamente puedo entender la necesidad de un lugar organizativo para todo esto. Así que con eso en mente, hemos estado planeando un sitio web, un sitio web dedicado, y estaba taking up a lot of space on the GIDA website y we have a lot of work to do as it is and a lot of plans. Así que dijimos, démosle su propio sitio web, guamedicalcampus.com. En el sitio web del campus de atención médica, encontrarás todas las fuerzas de trabajo, encontrarás los minutos de reuniones, encontrarás las reproducciones de Zoom, encontrarás apenas todas las cosas que tenemos. No encontrarás las notas de uno a uno de Mel's uno a uno reunión con DLM. No encontrarás nuestras notas, mis notas con Guam Ancestral. Y Guam Ancestral tiene una comisión appointada por usted, más bien confirmada por la legislatura que ha examinado estos problemas también. Y así, una sugerencia que surgió mientras estaba hablando fue, si vas a amendar esto, si tu decisión es presionar adelante con hacer cualquier tipo de aprobación, deberías agregar un miembro de la Comisión de Tierras Ancestrales para Espetata, quizá también. Ya sabes, tienes que tenerlos mirando. Todos los interesados son importantes, pero donde GIDA realmente está tratando de... Lo que realmente GIDA está tratando de hacer es que estamos tratando de hacer progreso y al mismo tiempo tratando de hacer progreso y tratando de manejar todas estas partes movidas y hay muchas. Así que el sitio web del campus de la medicina de Guam, lo lanzamos y creo que el sitio web del campus de la medicina de Guam sirve como un lugar terrificamente para la transparencia, si eso es lo que estamos buscando. De nota, cada advertido en el documento cuesta 300 a 500 dólares. Te estamos pidiendo, bajo la ley de gobierno abierto, poner dos para reuniones de comité y reuniones de grupo de trabajo, así que hay tres subcomités y un gran comité. Eso son cuatro reuniones a mes x dos, así que unos 600 dólares x 12, ya sabes, así que 1200 dólares. 300 x 4, 1200 x 2, 2400 x 12, aproximadamente 30.000. 1,200 times two, 2,400 times 12, about $30,000 a year towards advertisements in the paper. Everybody gets that, we have one print circulated paper on a regular basis. Every, everything else is online. We have our website online. We could start, I also brainstormed with the team and, um, we were thinking that a good way to go would be a standing announcement on the Guam Medical Campus website where we could stream meetings, just like our regular board meetings, there'd be no issues. Um, and we would have no issues posting the meetings or highlight notes, highlight the notes. And we were also thinking that in lieu of meeting notices, we could do, um, a P S A outreach to drive traffic to the website, but so people know, if our ancestral owners want to know what's the latest, they can go to, um, to, they'll be educated to know that's where they go. And more active social media, which we have not yet really engaged. We can commit to staffing the meetings, the date, time and place. Um, and we can also do a press release each time you have, we have a big meeting versus a physical advertisement, which I'm told has wider reach and is free, right? And then open it up to, uh, open it up to the public, right? You know, if, if you're not getting an invitation to the wedding, and you're not going to go to the wedding, right? So we want to make sure everyone knows this is an open invitation if you'd like to attend. We'd like to, again, we'd like to thank the speaker for the vote of confidence in G I D A to run such a monumentous task. Um, but I'd like to make it very clear that the view of G I D A is that this process has been transparent, albeit confusing, albeit, you know, we've had some trouble getting off the ground, largely because there's multiple working parts administering portions of the program. So you have G I D A administering one part and talking in their meetings, you have G A L C administering one part and talking in one part of their meetings, and the front office and so on and so forth. But where the transparency crosses over to micromanagement is where I take issue with the bill. So if you're putting G I D A in charge because we do a good job running things, I mean, we ran LEAP program, we disseminated $62.5 million, it wasn't perfect. And I had to get a couple of phone calls from Senator Tello about, you know, hey, Mel, transparency. And I also was audited by the O P A for all of our grant programs, they've been just fine. They haven't been perfect. But if you're putting G I D A in charge because you think we do a good job running programs and you have, you have the confidence in us and you think we're the ones that are going to get it done, then thank you, you let us do our job. And if you don't think we're transparent enough, certainly say so and we'll, we'll do our best to do a better job. We have, we've been trying to do a better job. But I mean, there, I think there are a lot better ways to spend government money than ads in the paper. And I think what we're finding is everyone's getting their news on Facebook anyway. Um, so in conclusion, that is the, um, that's the summary of my testimony today. I've also, um, I've let the, your team know, Madam Speaker, that I have the, that this is an exhibit I can, which is the letter to Congressmen Sinikolas, having to do with the chronology of events of the, of the Eagles Field. So if we're specifically interested in that, which we can also put on the medical campus website.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Manjola. Are you able to stay for the rest of the testimony and then questions from the panel? Thank you. Uh, I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator, uh, my vice chair, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo Taitegui, Senator Roy Canata, and Senator Frank Blas. Thank you, senators, for joining us as well. All right, so we'll proceed with the testimony. Mr. Leon Guerrero.
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero and I note that she got 20 minutes. So, for the record. Uh, I would like to start out my PowerPoint presentation, could we go to the second slide? Yes. In the, 234 years ago, we were advised by Thomas Jefferson when he wrote, "So it should not be surprising if sometimes public officials do not heed the voice of the people and go about doing whatever they wish, using their power and authority to enrich themselves and those closely allied to them. Who will govern the governors? There is only one force in the nation that can be depended upon to keep the government pure and the governors honest, and that is the people themselves. They alone, if well-informed, are capable of preventing the corruption of power and of restoring, and of restoring the nation to its rightful course if it should go astray. They alone are the safest depository of the ultimate powers of government." Now, I listened with great interest to the director's, uh, view of events. Over the past year, I have been very active with G I D A in my pursuit of information, issuing a number of FOIAs to which I still have not received all my information requests, having been informed by their legal counsel that basically it's none of your business. Never mind the fact that the documents you are requesting are part of a task order, work product, paid for by taxpayers. As far as the legal counsel for G I D A was concerned, those are not to be delivered unto me and to this date I have not received. A majority of things I've requested, even the Guam Pacific Daily News ran a story about the fact that, uh, G I D A was denying their Freedom of Information Request Act on the Guam Medical Campus. And it wasn't until I threatened to go legal that, uh, a folder appeared on the G I D A website. And when I tried to access it, I was informed by G I D A staff that I can't access that website yet, they're still uploading the information. So I think this is June or July, somewhere around there. I'd have to go back and look at my emails. So that shows that there's a difference between the, um, mission that was presented here and my actual experience. Could we go to the video clip now?
Raro took strong exception to the speech thing. She felt insulted on behalf of the people. She was particularly offended by Senator Sinikolas' comments about building a new
To say we're never going to build a hospital? I mean, a leader who sees a need of the people, you don't say that. You say, hey, you guys, let's rally together and let's get this hospital moving. And I'll tell you, we will build this hospital in less than four years. And to say that, and for example, Nestor, he's talking about the planning, the chartered aid. We've already done that. We already have a plan. We've met with the medical professionals. So we're way ahead of.
Now, in my FOIA request to the governor's office, Guam Memorial Hospital, and G I D A, there is no charrette ever been conducted. So the governor lied to us. So when our politicians are lying to us, it breaks the trust that we as citizens have in government, in our governors, and those who are appointed to act in our behalf, elected to act in our behalf. Because here we have the governor telling us all these things have happened. Now, uh, the, the director here told us that the medical stat, the medical community was consulted. There's two government doctors on this committee and an optometrist. None of the other doctors I have talked to, and I have talked to a lot of doctors, knew anything about this committee, have not been in any meetings or anything like that. So therefore, the, for the G I D A office to say that the medical community has been consulted is obfuscation, nothing more than obfuscation. Next slide, please. So when we have a governor who is the head of this government and is directing a $3 to $5 billion effort and consciously excluding the public from it, we only have two laws that allow the people of Guam to do our duty as citizens, and that is the Freedom of Information Act and the open government law, which this bill strengthens by specifying that the open government law shall apply specifically to this process. Next slide. Through the Freedom of Information Act, we have uncovered, and I've been using that FOIA process for 15 years, I could spend two hours going through all the misdeeds uncovered through the Freedom of Information Act. Most recently, the multimillion dollar contract, money for nothing. And it wasn't until I did the FOIA and went to the F B I that as soon as I go to the F B I, the contract is canceled. Next slide. So what we're looking at here is basically Bill 13 is a reinforcement of the open government law. It's something that's so important, it's something that is so badly needed because, next slide. Here we have a situation where both G I D A and Adalup announced to the press that the medical plan was a secret. Their plan to spend $2 to $3 billion, the taxpayers' money, is a secret. And based on all the FOIAs I had to file and got no response, based on the fact that I've spent nearly $2,000 of my own money, taking the governor's office, the hospital, and, uh, the hospital several times, I haven't had to take G I D A. But I've got almost $2,000 in my own money tied up in legal actions in the Superior Court of Guam, forcing public officials to comply with the laws that they swore to follow and comply with when they raised their hands with their oath of office. It shouldn't be that way. And it gets even worse. Next slide, please. I got arrested for attending a public meeting paid for by taxpayer money when I was directed by Guam Memorial Hospital staff to go to this meeting if I wanted to learn about the construction of Guam Memorial Hospital. I didn't just appear magically like a genie out of a bottle. I contacted Guam Memorial Hospital, inquired about the construction planning meeting, was told by Guam Memorial Hospital staff, the meeting was going to be at the Hyatt, and they offered to contact the meeting staff to let them know I was coming and not to start without me because I was going to be about five minutes late. And yet, when I get there, I'm arrested. How does that protect the citizen's right to know? That's what this bill is strengthening. And I hope that in strengthening the open government law, we strengthen it across all branches of government. Next slide, please. Because under the Freedom of Information Act, known locally as the Sunshine Law, I heard something the other, a couple of weeks ago on the radio that blew my mind. Bob Klitsky issued a FOIA to the port and Rory Raspicio basically told former Senator Klitsky, if you want this information, sue me. I am not going to give you the information you've requested under the open government law unless you sue me. Now, there's a problem we have here. Next slide. Under the open government law, every citizen has the right to inspect public documents unless specifically prohibited by law. And there's just a very narrow range of documents that we cannot look at as citizens. Uh, records pertaining to litigation in action, personnel or medical or similar files, information from taxpayers, library circulation records, and applications filed with, uh, any agency and test scores, home addresses and numbers of employees, and confidential records that are expressly protected under the law. These are the things that the Freedom of Information Act identifies as documents that we as citizens do not have a right to take a look at. If we go to slide 12. Here is the response of Guam Memorial Hospital to one of my FOIAs. I've requested a number of documents specifically pertaining to this, uh, Guam Medical Campus and the process and the payment of fees and everything. And I was told Guam Memorial is invoking the deliberative process exclusion. That is not one of the legislatively declared intents. They're claiming that former Attorney General Rapada said that the government can declare a discussionary deliberative process. Well, they can say everything is deliberative and that's what we are running to as citizens now. I mean, how is hotel invoices and a ballroom invoice, how is that protected by deliberative process? Why, why isn't that releasable? You know, why isn't the work product that G I D A contracted at great expense specified? Why isn't that releasable to me as a citizen? Because as a citizen, I paid for it. That is a problem that we are facing here with this government, and it's getting worse because now we're getting to the point where directors and other officials are telling citizens, hey, you want it, go sue me. That's not a cheap process. In order for me as a citizen to sue the government, I have to come up with $5,000 as a retainer. And in the history of Guam, I've never once heard a retainer being returned. That was a joke. The attorneys on the bench can laugh. So the burden shouldn't be on the citizens to make the government comply. But that's the way things are right now. I'm hoping that with this bill, which basically strengthens the open government law by specifically mentioning the, the Guam Medical Campus project, because that's, that's a $3 billion project if it's a penny. And so far, the medical community has not been involved and stakeholders in the community have not been involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon Guerrero.
10 minutes. I did it.
Appreciate that. Mr. Tenorio.
I don't know if I can, uh, the only thing that I can do right now is to expand maybe the, the realization as to what is happening to the people, the impact of this, building the hospital on this ancestral land. I'm only one individual. This year, I'll be 85 years old. Out of my family, we, I have seven brothers and sisters, that includes me. I have five grandkids and four, uh, five kids, five great, uh, grandkids and four They took our land in Lalo Bergara back in 1950. I grew up on that land. We toiled that land. We, and the thing is, that I never mentioned before, I grew up barefooted. I mean, we go out to the field barefooted. We toiled that land. We raised pigs, chickens, cows, ducks. I grew up until I went to school in the kindergarten, barefooted. My mom had to get clothes from the flour sack or the rice sack and somehow fix that up, make pants and shirt for us. That's how I grew up. And this land, we lived of this land. We cultivated it. We grew sweet potatoes, corn, taro, tapioca. We had coconut trees all over this place. We never had to buy oil because we had, we make our own coconut oil. We never had to buy any oil. And, uh, looking back, it really, I didn't realize I had a hard life, but I learned to live with it. And I'm only one out of seven. And I'm only, out of the seven, this is only one family of one land, of how many lands were taken in Lalo Bergara and Radio Bergara and Tezen and all these other places? They kicked us out. Right now, you, you look around the island, you got men, it's embarrassing. Look at this, the red lights, there are beggars out there. I've never seen this 20 years ago. What's happening? But here we are, we're going to build a first-class hospital. We need the first-class hospital. I, I like that. But this island is only 31 miles long and an average of fouls, five and an average of fouls, five miles wide. We have limited space. We have other nation coming in trying to open a cultural center. They're requesting for land. What are we doing, guys? What are we doing for the people like my kids? Fortunately, three of them bought a house. But the other two didn't have any. My grandkids don't have any. My great-grandsons, they don't have a future. What are they looking at 10, 20 years from now? What is our government doing for our local people? That is what I'm looking at. What is my government doing for us? We're going to build a first-class hospital. And my imagination is we're going to do that because we're going to make Guam the central capital of the healthcare center for the Marianas and the Palau and all those areas. That's what's happening. What about the people? That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Tenorio. For the record, that was Juan S. Tenorio. Mr. Dusmasi. Mr. Vincent Flores Caberra.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and the Senators of the 37th Guam Legislature. My name is Vincent Flores Caberra, and I'm representing myself as the taxpayer of Guam. I am for Bill 1337. The key word in this legislation is transparency, which is lacking since the Guam Economic Development Authority in June of 2019 made a report of the potential releaseable federal lands and the intention to build a medical campus. January 23, 2023, KUM released a story just before this hearing on the Guam Medical Campus, guammedicalcampus.com. It is now February 2023, and there is no transparency prior to this released story. Only till, and this is my opinion, that the administration received word that this bill would have a public hearing. Otherwise, I don't believe they would release the new website. This reminds me of the October 17 meeting at the Governor's Conference Room, the day before a public hearing concerning the hospital. All meetings and negotiations with the Secretary concerning GMC were all done in secret. Another example would be the Health Task Force Meeting, which I reviewed on the GMC website. Director of Land Management Joseph Boer has stated that there is a backup plan if this doesn't go through. And what is that backup property? We don't know because it's a secret. The original landowners would like to know so that we can have an open dialogue and talk about the merits each property has and not just have one authority making the decision without any input. Finally, we need to stop the secrecy and be transparent, especially when it deals with lands that the military owns that are deemed excess. Again, I would like to restate that I am for Bill 1337. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caberra. Is there anyone else here who wishes to provide testimony on this bill? If not, I'm going to, we'll begin questions by the panel. If it's okay, I'm going to start. I think I've recognized all my colleagues. But so, pretty much again, I just want to clarify a couple of things that were stated. So first, yeah, I agree. We're talking about a project that was clearly stated on the record to be over $1 billion in some of the hearings that we've had, maybe over $2 billion. We have a contract with Matrix Task Order. That's $1.48 million. That's federal funds, but still, not all of the discussions in regards to these things were public. I thought it was pretty clear in the law that Senator Tietzke passed to establish the task force that, of course, all task force meetings are public. But when we passed another law and we implemented a council, things seemed to change. And then that's when I kind of lost track of whether we were having a task force meeting, whether we were having this 21st Century Healthcare Committee meeting, and whether somebody thought that meeting didn't need to be public. And that's why we want to clarify with the bill. I don't think it's micromanaging. We want to clarify that. And I think that, you know, the people of Guam are entitled to hear the deliberations that are taking place when these decisions are being made, particularly the landowners, to hear the deliberation when Eagles Field was decided to be the first priority or the first preference for land, instead of them finding out in the newspaper or some other news media that that is the land that we as a government have decided to use. And so, yes, you've had meetings with them since, but that's really the origins of why those meetings became necessary, unfortunately, after the fact, where then, you know, trying to explain our decisions as opposed to bringing the public along in our decision-making and showing them what we are considering, why we are ruling things out or going one way or the other. You know, you talked about that other bill that was introduced. I'm not sure it's relevant here, but I understand it was discussed with the landowners. So yes, that will be addressed as well. But there is something else that I really want to clear the record on, and then I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. And that is, again, in the media, and today, you've said that this property has never been put on the excess lands list. And yet, when we look through with FOIA, we use FOIA, just like Mr. Leon Guerrero. And I don't think the public should have to resort to FOIA or the costs of FOIA, you know, or really the hassle of it. But really, there are costs involved in that as well. And I don't think senators should have to resort to FOIA. We're hearing in the media that this has never been on the excess lands list, but it doesn't. But we found no document rebuking the January 15, 2021 letter from the Secretary of the Navy to the governor after the governor had sent the Secretary of the Navy the list of lands that she would like returned, and she requested that this land be returned. The Navy Secretary responded, "I am pleased to now identify the DoD parcel for the medical complex and add it to the list of parcels eligible for return to the territory of Guam. This site is one of the three referenced in your October 5 letter and is located within parcel number 16, lot A7A and B, Anderson Bergara Annex, as described in the June 2019 Guam Economic Development Authority report enclosed in your letter of August 18, 2019." So GIDEA included it in their report as the lands that they thought were excess and should be returned. The governor included it in her request. And the Secretary of the Navy had first denied, but then came back with a letter in January 2021 approving, not only just with those words, but he attached the list as he was required under this agreement that we have with them to have a net negative impact. When they signed that 2011 programmatic agreement to perceive with the military buildup, they promised to have a net negative land impact. So as part of that, they were going to return lands that were excess. And so he, it's called, and this is a spreadsheet. I'm not making it up. It's called Parcels Added to Department of Navy Net Negative Inventory Based on Governor of Guam Letter of August 8, 2019. And so he includes 102.20 acres in that list. That means he agrees. These should be returned. These are excess. And of course, there's other processes that have to go through, but this is pretty much the agreement. And we keep getting statements in the media, and this is just for me, another reason why transparency is a little bit lacking. Because if we've got the Navy sending us a letter saying we agree this property is excess, how do we come out with statements that say, "This was never on the list. This is not going to be returned." These are conclusions made from some other avenue that's not public. And so that, for me, is a concern. Because of course, you know, we'll talk about it a little bit more in the next bill as well. You know, justice for landowners is not what we were going to do under this Ancestral Lands Commission of giving them pennies for their land as well or whatever compensation we can come up with. That, I don't believe, is justice. I don't believe the takings in any way were compensated justly. So we came up with, what we, what, not me, but leaders before me believed was justice was if we can get these lands returned, we are going to give them to these ancestral landowners. And that would be closer to justice, as close possibly as we could come. And so I, yeah, I don't, I just don't want to be referencing or characterizing payment of these landowners who we've decided to keep their land, that that would really be justice. But yes, we were going to have to do that in certain situations, like the airport, where it was already built. And, you know, other places where the government decided they were going to keep the land, where we've got power plants, probably, water wells, something. But in this case, we don't. And so I want to be optimistic and say it's still possible. But, you know, on the bill, yeah. So we are, I'm, thank you very much, Director, for, you know, agreeing to these additional members. Again, some of these members are on that task force. So the doctors that are participating or maybe the mayors who were participating. But it wasn't clear to me that they were also participating under this committee or that, and these additional meetings that were taking place, whether they were being included. So I very much appreciate your lead in this as well and your work. And thank you again to you who have testified, pointed out that FOIA has been the course of the day in regards to getting information on this. And I want to thank you, Director, by the way, for the website. I think that's very helpful now. All right, so I'm going to go. Senator Barnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming to testify at this public hearing. As I'm sure you know, I came from the media, so very familiar with the FOIA process, very familiar with the ways that not just this administration, but prior administrations try and keep information, not just from the general public, but even from the media, where it's clearly mandated that we're able to access information, even if it's deliberative. You're right, Mr. Leon Guerrero. The exceptions to the FOIA law are very narrow. And I've been mind-boggled and flabbergasted at just the way that our government has kept information from the public, especially with this case of the new medical campus. I remember when we first heard about this, I interviewed a couple of original landowners about it. They were blindsided. The media was blindsided. The island was blindsided, with the exception of those key insiders who knew about this project, who walked this project down the path, who presented it in a very public way. And they had already reached a determination about where the governor wanted the hospital. And I remember being in the media and, you know, honestly kind of freaking out that they had decided so many things not in a public way. And it's very frustrating to hear about meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting that was held. And I like to think that I pay attention that we didn't know about any of these meetings. And I don't think that transparency after the fact can be called transparency. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for introducing this bill. I think it does kind of strengthen the open government law. I think there's other ways that we can do it. And it's also just disrespectful, really. And such a far cry from where we have come as a people, as a Tramor people, in how we have always, from top to bottom, Republican to Democrat, we have always stood and defended our people's right to get their land back. As I can imagine, when you make decisions like this and you go all the way down and you have a place that you want to build a hospital on, you don't tell anybody. And I go and interview an old man and his daughter suffering from cancer, busting out maps. And you know, one thing I love about the original landowners and Speaker, you've said this to me before, they're some of the smartest people on our island. They might not have a law degree, but gosh, donuts, son of a scutcher, they know the law. And so I sat in Mr. Tenorio's kitchen, and he busted out these maps. And he told me the whole story about how, similar to you, Mr. Tenorio, how, what is it you said here? Looking back, you didn't realize you had a hard life, but you learned to live. I've heard similar stories from many of the families that had lands in this area of Eagles Field. And I think if the governor had only pursued this site for the medical campus, if her zeal had been the same in pursuing it for it to be returned to the original landowners, I don't think we'd be having this hearing. And Speaker's right when she references these documents. When I was in the media, I FOIA'd these documents because I didn't, I just didn't believe what I was hearing. And I can't believe what I'm hearing today. I've been following this. I attended a hearing last year, November, at the request of the original landowners. It just breaks my heart, you know? And it's an insult to the memory of great Tramor activists like the Funto Anges Santos. For these original landowners to be kept in the dark and then when we turn on the lights, it's divide and conquer, pitting one family against another family. That's a job the federal government used to do. We don't need to be doing that to our own people. It's frankly disgusting. And I apologize. I want to apologize to all the original landowners out here on behalf of this government, the way they have treated you guys, continue to treat you. I think you deserve better. I think that we should be fighting to return our lands to our people, not keep those lands from our people. I don't really have any questions, but I fully support this bill, Speaker. And yeah, the website is nice, but when I look at the website, all I see is a whole lot of decisions that were made with very little public input. And had the public been involved from the beginning of this process, like I said, we might not be here. If we had heard how sacred this land was to people like Mr. Tenorio, who's 85 years old, who has not let go of his dream to get this land back. If Mr. Tenorio has not let go, I'm not letting go either. And our governor shouldn't be letting go. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Lujan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, panel, for being here today. There's no doubt. There are a lot of steeds, of course, that have been bestowed upon our people, and we would like to see lands returned to those who still can get it or compensated in one way or another. But let me go back, Madam Director, and ask you a couple of questions. And you may have repeated this over and over, but a few of us are new, and this started back in the '36 Guam Legislature. So you may be repeating yourself with this. This medical campus, what is this medical campus going to consist of? GMH, I know, is one of them. But what is it going to consist of? I mean, what's going to be housed there?
Sure, you're asking what agencies are intended to be housed there?
Yes, yes.
Currently, the Guam Memorial Hospital, the Department of Public Health Social Services, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. I believe there's also going to be a presence from the Veterans Administration.
Okay, so basically four agencies.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. When the Matrix Group was hired to, I guess, do the comprehensive study to put all this together and, I guess, looking at the site? And they were paid, what, $1.48 million and all that? Did they do a comprehensive study? And, I mean, you know, with these agencies and where it's at, where it's going to be put and all that? Was that, was it comprehensive?
Yes, Senator. I believe they followed the scope of the task orders. And there were nine. And we believe the task orders were pretty encompassing.
Okay. And the reason, the reason why it was comprehensive because I want to see really the reality because we're looking at $1 million or $1 billion, $2 billion, maybe $3 billion. If we were going to break ground today, it's not going to happen, absolutely not. So I'm looking at, down the line, with the situation with our HD workers and things of that nature and supply chain situation. things of that nature and, and supply chain, uh, situations and all that. I mean, this could, this could even grow even, even more. So I'm looking at really the reality of, of this facility being built and, and the comprehensiveness in which, uh, Matrix was hired to, uh, to, um, to look at this and the feasibility of really having this facility erected. Now, in regards to the cost, so GMH, um, public health, behavioral health.
That's correct.
And veterans, right? Veterans.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Now, that being said, okay, ribbons cut and all this. What, um, did Matrix also include in their, uh, in their comprehensive, uh, study that the cost will be offset by these, these buildings that the government owns will be offset by maybe a sale or a lease to other, to private companies and all that?
Uh, yes, I believe there was a reuse, um, there might be one remaining task order. I have to double check on the reuse plan for existing buildings such as the existing GMH, as well as Public Health in Mangila and, um, anything else that might not be under the government asset inventory.
Okay. So a reuse, um, a reuse by another government agency or a reuse by a lease out to, to a private entity?
Um, the highest and best use, sir.
Has, okay. So highest and best use. So if it's highest and best use, it could be, it could be a government entity. It could be.
Certainly could be.
Sure, okay. That being said, if it's a government entity to take over these, these buildings, what would be the cost then if it's highest and best use, the, the, the cost to refurbish these buildings to, um, to house, um, again, uh, these agencies that may go in there? Because.
I think it certainly depends on the functionality, the required functionality of the building toward any particular specification.
Okay. Because my line question basically is the, the, the medical campus alongside if it's best and best use for, for these facilities that will be, be vacated by, um, these agencies and now will be used by other agencies that would need to be refurbished. And I understand that the cost will be based on that, but it'll, it'll still be a government cost on top of, now.
I think that's a, I think that's a premature speculation at this point because they can always lease it out.
Well, 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 because I'm, I'm trying to figure out where this 1, 2, or 3 billion is coming from, whether it's inclusive of, of all this in, in the whole planning situation, whether it's inclusive of that. Because if it's not, then that's an extra cost outside of, of the, the medical campus. And I'm wondering if either 1, 2, or 3 billion dollars is inclusive of best and, and best use of this other entities that the government may take on themselves again. So do you know whether Matrix had included this as a government entity and that's how much they're going to, and, and that's the cost of, that's why we came up with 2 or 3 billion dollars?
I don't know where the 2 or 3 billion dollars came from, Senator. Can you share with me?
What, no, no, I don't know. That's what I'm hearing. That I, I'm, I'm hearing of a billion, 2 billion, you know? And I'm just saying if it's 1 or 2 billion right now, by the time we build it, it's really going to be about 3 billion. And so, and that's why I'm saying that at this point. And so if Matrix was hired to do that, I wonder how holistic they looked at this and said, well, okay, this is the situation and, and if it's the, it'd be a government entity, we recommend they sell it, they recommend they, they lease it, or be another agency, which agency is going to move into this? I would think for 1.4 million dollars that I would have a holistic, uh, comprehensive study and what government agency, what it's going to cost. Because I'm trying to get a big picture view of what this, um, uh, medical center, not only that, but the other entities that are moving out and what those buildings are going to be and how much it's going to cost the government. Because that has to be a part of this whole equation. And not only that, is that the, um, from what I'm hearing, that, uh, this, this, uh, medical campus is not inclusive of infrastructure that would have to go there. And there's major infrastructure that would have.
That's incorrect information, sir.
I'm sorry?
I said that's incorrect information. It's seen, it is, um, the estimates thus far do include, um, infrastructure.
Includes infrastructure?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, in regards to the hospital, is that a shell of the hospital or is this inclusive of all the equipment that needs to, to, to come in there? Or are they just going to bring in the old stuff from GMH and all, is it, is it inclusive of, of that? What, what, what would it cost to furnish fully? If you're going to have state of the art building, state of the art hospital, okay? You cannot just build a beautiful state of the art building and not state of the art equipment inside. So what is the, what would be the cost of really being the state of the art? And state of the art means a constant maintenance or a constant renewal of things because medical, medical equipment constantly changes.
Yes, sir.
And, and so what is the cost, what would be the cost of, of holistically? And, and that's why, you know, like you said, you don't know where this billions coming from. Well, I'm trying to see whether really this is realistic.
Right. I believe, I believe the cost set forth in the Medical Action Plan was something like 685 million for the hospital inclusive of equipment. Um, now, equipment speaks to medical equipment. It doesn't speak to desks and chairs, which depending on how new they are, are, I certainly think they can and should move to, uh, from place to place just fine.
If it's going to be state of the art, you better, better not just have a, the old ones.
But I think if there's specialized equipment, bariatric chambers, oxygen hookups, things along those lines, that was incorporated into the budget, yes, sir.
Okay.
As was the infrastructure costs. Um, as to the scope and extent of the reuse plan, sir, I have not delved, uh, deep into that. Um, I, myself personally, I can consult my colleagues and, yeah, and get in touch with you on.
Is it, is it inclusive as well as, as your staffing that in order to have a state of the art facility?
Mm-hmm.
You have state of art building, state of the art equipment, you have state of the art staffing, which means you're going to have to pay them state of the art salary to be competitive. And you have to, you have to be constantly on top of those because of the fact that you're, they're going to be pilfered by other medical facilities. So I'm just saying, what would the annual cost be in the pilferage or, or, or trying to keep these, uh, these people or your, your, your.
Your state of the art nurses.
Your staff there, you're, you're going to have to constantly look at their, 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 their pay and, and, and raise it accordingly to, to keep their state of the art status, to be competitive with other, with other entities, health facility entities. I mean, that's what's happening right now with our law enforcement situation. They're pilfered by other, you know, because they're making more money.
Right.
So again, when we say state of the art, state of the art is not just how the building looks, but inside and your staffing. So, and that's why I'm trying to, again, look at this whole big picture, whether really this project is, 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 um, is feasible based on the cost and what has to be done to really be state of the art. Because what we're saying state of, state of the art, because let, let me tell you, and it, it just recently in regards to, to meeting with the, with airline folks regarding, uh, folks coming back and, 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 and what airports are doing right now, the one thing they said, yeah, and we were bragging about the fact that we build our, our, we can segregate our passengers now. The one thing they said to me is, Senator, you have to upgrade your airport because your airport is way behind. And to us, uh, the boy is state, state of the art. And they're telling us all these things, you know, I mean, people don't even have to bring cards anymore, right? They take their phones and all that. We don't have that. I mean, you mean customs, ta za, ta za pen, you know? Ta za pen. I mean, so I'm going, you know, and then, and then they say state of the art and we put, hey, uh, we're, we're turning off these people movers because, uh, because, um, we're saving power. And you know what? And I tell you what's, what, what's ironic about it. Here we are bragging to the Japanese, so we're open, let's come in here. And I had one tour agent said, sir, let me show you this picture. And he's the one that showed me about we turned.
Senator, sorry, just, uh.
Okay, real quick. One minute. And they said, I was there three months ago, your people mover wasn't working. Now they're putting it that we're, we're saving power. So anyway, I just wanted to look holistically, real, holistically at, at the cost. And I'm still not convinced that I can support such a project because I don't know what the true cost is. I mean, uh, you yourself, you said you don't know where the billions came in. Well, I don't know where that, that, where it's coming to from as well. So anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate your being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
May I just, Senator, state of the art people are required whether the building is old or new. And I think there's been tremendous strides made in the last several years concerning improving the healthcare professions, um, through investments in the University of Guam and GCC. So.
Thank you, Director.
Plug on that because we pay for some boot camps.
Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to everyone here that provided testimony. Um, I think this bill is a very, it's a common sense bill, really. And I just want to read at least a little bit of the legislative intent, which I truly believe, um, basically reinforces what the open, open government law is. It states, "The legislature declares it is the policy of the territory that the formation of public policy and decisions is public and should not be conducted in secret. The people of Guam do not yield their individual rights to the public agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." I think this is really a, a critical part in governance. And I, um, you know, I think as Guam is looking to develop, um, as, as we look to decolonize, I think it's important that we retain good governance. And I think the open, open government law is one of the, the pillars of good governance. And, um, I think it's so important, especially when we're talking about huge projects, whether it's huge or small, um, you know, everyone should have, uh, the right to know, uh, the right to have a say. And, you know, especially with these larger projects and we were talking billions of dollars, uh, these are the taxpayers' dollars that will eventually pay for these projects. And everyone should have a right to know and right to say in these projects. The other thing that I want to say too, you know, I know, um, my colleague said so much and as, um, you know, Senator Barnett was talking, I was getting a little, uh, pain in my chest a little bit to, to hear the, the trauma that our, our people have experienced over decades. And, um, you know, we're talking about a healthcare facility, right? Healthcare facility that's supposed to heal our people. And, you know, the, what we're doing here is really, I think, you know, it's undermining that. I think part of healing should be looked at holistically, not just about Western medicine treating acute problems, but also what is the underlying, uh, source of our illnesses? Right? And so I think when we look at creating our future hospital, um, you know, with the intent is very important. The intent of healing our people should be broader than just Western medicine. And so, um, I'd just like to, you know, register my support of this bill. I think it, it makes a lot of sense. And, um, so thank you. Thank you all for here, being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly thank you to all of you of taking your time this evening to come and testify. Uh, many years ago, and I definitely obviously am an advocate of the open government law, the reason we have two and five day notices is because I introduced a bill a number of years ago to make sure that we had a means of reminding or letting the public know of any public action that was to take where decisions were going to be made on behalf of the public. And last year, my only bill that got signed into law required that these meetings be put online and that if they did not meet the proper public notice, those particular meetings would all be invalidated. Because I think, and we've seen unfortunately, and it's our own people, uh, you know, who sometimes take advantage of the authority that they've been given temporarily by the people. And I think when we have more eyes on any issue, uh, we have a better outcome versus the self-interest unfortunately that, that comes to our table. Uh, I appreciate the introduction, Speaker, of, of this bill, uh, but I think it, it underlies what is, was, what I think is a bigger issue. We're on the sidelines, it appears, or there's probably an interest for the administration to put us on the sidelines and we're just supposed to go along with decisions that are being made for us without engaging us to make sure that these are decisions that we want? Are these decisions that we can afford? And are these decisions ultimately in the best interest of our people? And the only ones who can make that decision are the people collectively. Uh, we may not always agree, but in the end, what, what the majority decision is, is certainly how we've decided that we should go. I myself personally, um, I'm not decided that I want to see a new hospital located in the location where it's at. And I do understand concerns of, of, um, those of you that are private landowners. I can't imagine someone coming in and taking my house with my property, uh, and then locking me out of it and then years later deciding something else with it. And it's not something that I would have to decide what I want to do with it or, you know, not be able to pass it on to my child or my grandchildren and, you know, whatever the case may be. Um, so, so that issue in and of itself, even without the decision or the desire of the governor to have this facility built there, uh, that in and of itself is, is something that should give us a moment of pause. Because that's a significant, that, that, that's a harm that was brought upon our people by others. And I don't think we get anything and nor do we move forward doing it to our own people. I think there's something wrong with that. Um, and then also this decision that collectively that the, this so-called medical campus has to be built. I support a new hospital. I don't necessarily agree that everything under the sun needs to be located there because I think, you know, I want a lot of things too. But, you know, I always ask myself, can I afford it? Can the people of Guam afford it? I mean, we have not been successfully able consistently, at least as far as my conscious mind has been here, to maintain a hospital, to ensure we have the quality of staff, the medications. I mean, how many times we hear in the past, the pharmacy doesn't have the medication that's needed? We don't have the specialists. Uh, the short time Governor Calvo assigned me up there, even the age of the equipment, many of it at the time had far exceeded its life use. There were operation rooms that were not in operation because they did not have collectively the needed basic equipment to perform operations at the hospital. So I don't know how that miraculously changes because we build a brand new facility. I don't know how that challenge gets addressed. And more importantly, I don't know, can our children afford the hospital? Can our grandchildren afford it? Because there's still going to be a certain percentage of our people that will go off island, just sometimes for their own sense of comfort, security. Maybe there's certain specialists in other, other locations that they prefer to be seen at. Uh, we're never all going to be everything here. We are a small island in the middle of the Pacific. We're never going to have everything under the sun that we want here. So I definitely want to see improvement in, in a new facility and I hope it's maintained because I don't believe, which is the trend now, that every 40 years, we're going to demolish every building we build and build a new one and add to the debt service. I don't know who's going to pay for it. Uh, and looking at the amount of money that we are continuing to add on to the annual debt service, that's great when the money's flowing. I'm sure, uh, our Director of GIDEA can agree with that. But when the money's not flowing, and for those of us that have been here longer, you know, around for a long time, we've been here during the hard times. The last few years have been a gift because of unfortunately the pandemic and because of our military buildup that we know in the next few years is going to start declining. Once those, once most of that base is completed, uh, we will not have the level of revenues that we have coming in. I look to our brothers and sisters in the CMI right now and I hear the challenges of what they're talking about financially, of the cuts they're going to have to start implementing. And they're drastic. 40% is a lot more than 5, 10, 15, 20, or 30. And so with regards to that, I, I definitely support this bill, Madam Speaker, but I think there's a bigger issue here. And it's, it's the direction of the administration that they have decided that this is what they want and we're just all supposed to fall into place with it. And that's not something I agree with. The last time I checked, we decide how funds get spent, at least in terms of public money. So I don't doubt there'll be more deliberation about this issue, but certainly for me personally, I support a new hospital. I don't support it in that locate, even though it's close, be close to my house, but I don't support it in that location for a number of reasons, including the issues that have been raised. It's one thing that the military is holding on to this property and saying, well, we're not releasing it. We'll lease it to you people, the dear people of Guam, but we're not, we're not giving it back. We're not giving it back. And that, that in and of itself is an offense. And to think that even if they're going to lease it to us and sidestep that issue, it doesn't make the offense any less offensive. Um, so, so I think there's going to be a challenge, at least for some of us that are here today, that we would not be supportive of decisions moving forward without that level of engagement, not just by ourselves as members of the legislature, but certainly input by the public with regards to this particular project moving forward. With that, Madam Speaker, I don't have any questions. Again, thank you for coming in and providing your, your views on this particular bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Taitigui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good evening to everyone that is here. You know, um, 2019, I introduced a bill that created a task force to do just that, not only, um, to build and look at building a new hospital, but, um, also, uh, one that would address our current hospital, you know, altogether as one. I approached GIDEA to find some funding for this, um, this task force because many times legislature. I approached GIDEA to find some funding for this task force, because many times legislatures, they put task forces up, but there's no money to fund it, you know, to do the research or to provide someone to assist them in calculating numbers, et cetera, because nobody's an engineer at GIDEA or et cetera. So what happened was, I approached GIDEA, and I want to thank you, Mel, for meeting with me, and we found a way to make some money, not make some money, find some money for this task force. About 1.2 million, was that right? Okay.
That's correct, ma'am.
And that's why I want to bring that 1.2 million. So that 1.2 million was to help for a task force, so I introduced the legislation 2019 to do this. It had the committee all put in place, you know, everything all set for this. Got my colleagues to agree to this task force that would address both the new and the old hospital. The governor didn't even bother to sign it into law. She let it lapse, didn't think it was important. But luckily, I had about 10 other people, other senators, to vote on this bill in case it was vetoed. So it lapsed into law. And then what happens later, 2021, if I'm not mistaken, a bill was passed to have another task force. And this time, it was called the 21st Century Task Health Center Committee. So my question was, by law, the bill that, Bill Number Five, that became public law, 35-58, has GIDEA put this committee together to have a meeting at all?
So, thank you for that question, Senator. In consulting the law and the representatives included and so on and so forth, we did do our best to put together what we believe to be our interpretation of this and the second, that group that was passed, and that's how this group ended up kind of larger. And then, from there, that group informed the task orders that then went to Matrix to then conduct the medical campus plan. So to my knowledge, Madam Senator, yes, we did, we believe we complied, or I believe we complied with the law, albeit a hybrid version?
Yeah, no, my question, again, is, was public law 35-58, which was Bill Five, ever implemented? Did you guys formulate the task force that was placed into law in 2019? Did you have that meeting?
I don't know if that specific task force was actually officially impaneled, ma'am. However, if you read the--
So you disregarded, GIDEA disregarded the law that was passed to create this task force? So that means the funding that we found, the 1.2, for this task force actually was never implemented. I mean, the money was there, so instead, duated and created another task force that was created. Does the same thing, except it doesn't address the current hospital and what we need to do, because it's going to take, you know, quite a bit of time to, you know, build a new hospital in this facility. So I just wanted to give the listening audience a history on where we are and where we are today. Now, granted, is my feelings hurt that, you know, Bill Five, that became law to create a task force and to take the time to find that money? No, as long as we're here today trying to find a way to address the need of our community, and that is a hospital that everyone can feel comfortable walking into, knowing that they can get, you know, the healthcare they need or the services they need. So we're here today, and this committee that's put into place should abide by all the guidelines of the open government law. I've attended many of them, Mel. When you first started this, even though you didn't do the other bill, you know, the task force that was put into place prior to this, but I attended many of them, and I listened intently to that. And then I wanted to find if these meetings that we first, when you first opened up this, are they online, day one?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, no, ma'am, let me clarify.
Yeah.
The first thing we did was, if you can recall, including the reuse or the, how much it would cost to fix the existing GMH, all of that was uploaded onto a page, which was then in a link. So every invitation, meeting invitation sent out to the big group, there was, these are all the materials from the previous meeting, these are the, and then, so eventually, that became kind of, you know, go look for the old email kind of exercise, and so we decided to just house it under our website, under the download section, which is kind of a catch-all area of our website. And then when that got kind of too onerous, we gave it its own website.
Yeah, I believe I attended the very first meeting that you guys had for this committee, and my question--
I don't believe that one is. And I did say that in the test, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No worries.
I mentioned that in the testimony, was the first meeting that was called by the Office of the Governor was hosted on Zoom as well by the Office of the Governor, not recorded. The second meeting was the first meeting that was, was online.
Did anybody take any minutes at the meeting of the first meeting?
I believe the Office of the Governor may have.
Okay, and we can get copies of that minutes?
You know, I don't believe that we have a copy, and I don't, so I don't know if that--
Could you please find out and try and place that on your website as well? It's very important on the first one, and then the second one, the third, and all the other meetings are important, so that is on the website right now for everyone to listen.
That's correct.
Okay, take it. The other one is, you know, you mentioned earlier, like transparency, and then you even referred to my name, saying, you know, Telo asking for trans, Senator Telo asking for transparency, transparency. I think it's very important, Mel. Transparency, we have to answer to the people of Guam and the money that they spend, you know, the taxpayers' money that they put in. We have to answer to them, so transparency should be at the first and foremost in front of everything, and I will continue to hound for transparency if I don't see anything on it. So this bill provides that, of course, and I support it, and I asked the Speaker, if she can include me as a co-sponsor on this, especially this one particularly, since, you know, Bill Five was never implemented, but the money is there. Now, going back to the money that we found for the task force on Bill Five, where is that money today? The 1.2 million dollars that we were, you were able to, GIDEA was very instrumental on finding that money, where is that money today?
So the opportunity to apply for a grant that would service the desire of what you were looking to do is the OEA, the Office of Economic Adjustment, grant that eventually funded the task orders that are housed on, the task orders, the final, the work product of which is located on our website.
Okay, so the 1.2 is with this committee, right? The healthcare--
The 1.2 has been utilized towards the healthcare, the medical action plan. 1.4, to be specific.
No, they used OEA money.
That's correct.
Grant money, 1.4.
We applied--
That means that your money, your appropriation, was not used.
Okay, it wasn't, okay, so the--
There was no, from my knowledge, I have never utilized an appropriation by the legislature for the use of the healthcare task force. We found the OEA, the opportunity for the federal monies, and we said, let's use the federal monies, it's first, or it's not the local money, so let's use that first.
You thought, we found the money through the SIDS or the--
The SIDS, as you recall, so, Senator, the first meeting that you and I had concerning the hospital, I believe, was, you were sharing with me that you thought GIDEA was capable and able to carry this project out. Thank you for that. And then we said, okay, why don't we start with putting it in the SIDS plan, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies Plan that we're going to issue later on this year? And what that does is that puts us on kind of a preference list with regard to federal funding. So then, it ended up on the SIDS, but then, as you were in process of developing your bill, and then the, and then, I think that was when we were saying, no, okay, we're already going to, we're going to put in for this grant irrespective of what happens, because this is a project we could undertake with or without the direction. A project like this can happen. However, we knew that there would be some kind of level of stakeholder engagement as far as informing the task orders, right? And so we said, let's put in for this money. I have to, I have to juggle my memory with our, look back on my notes for the timeline of events. The front office, Office of the Governor, or, applied for the OEA funding, received the OEA funding, and utilized the contract that we currently have, the IDIQ, that was put into place in 2014 or 2015, because this consulting group did the original medical action plan. The idea was utilize this money for an update of the medical action plan. Look at, by that time, the Army Corps of Engineers had done their study with regard to how much it would cost to rebuild or to fix GMH versus build it from scratch. Look at that, look at all the collection of documents since 2012 or so, and do an overall assess, bring us all up to date, up to speed. Then I believe in the working group meetings, when, that are recorded, that are on Zoom, there was some discussion about, can everyone please consult the task orders? This is what we're thinking, the draft task orders? What are we thinking to ask? What is the work product we'd like to see? That is where the desire for some reuse came into place. That was where the desire for, how many beds do we have? And so on and so forth.
Okay, we're getting a little bit too deep in there. I just want to know where, when we located or put in for the SIDS, right, and got the, and was awarded? We were awarded not by OEA, we were awarded by how? How was that money given, the grant that you put into that--
OEA, ma'am.
Okay, so the 1.2 is actually 1.4, and it came from the SIDS?
From, it didn't come from the SIDS, ma'am. The SIDS, the SIDS is the document, that's like, the SIDS is the strategic planning document that we reference when we're putting in for a grant with the OEA or ANA or SAMSA or whatever federal agency.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so now it went from one to, okay, 1.4. So this, all, any kind of funding, how much have you spent so far of the 1.4 in this task force?
Well, I believe the task orders are near complete, so we've spent the--
Full amount?
Yes, ma'am.
The 1.4?
Mm-hmm.
And do, is that on the website, on where you, how you spent this?
On the, I mean, we can certainly provide it to you.
Oh, it should be provided.
We have, I believe we have the invoices from Matrix Group and things like that.
Oh, yeah, definitely, Mel. If, I mean, if you're already putting this without us, you know, can you please, from 1.4 million dollars, how much, where was it spent? Who received the contract and exactly how they got the contract in the first place? So that being said, the creation of that, why was the governor lapsed into K? Was there anybody from the medical community and medical association that approached you who wanted to be on this task force?
To my recollection, I cannot speak for my colleagues, anybody else who may have been involved in the task force, but to my recollection, I don't think so. I don't think so.
What about on the mayors, municipal councils? Anybody approach you who wanted to sit on this task force?
Not that I'm aware.
Okay, so these additional individuals which, to be placed on the committee, do you have an issue with any of them?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do you recommend anybody else besides them? I heard you say something about ancestral--
Earlier, I said, hey, man, we're talking about Gauck this whole time. Why don't we put someone from Gauck on the list and Guam Ancestral Lands Commission? Why don't we put a commissioner or something like that?
That you might want to consider them to be on the task force as well. Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have. I appreciate your time, Mel, and hope the request on the spending of that 1.4 million dollars is up for us to see as well, to keep that transparency rolling, right? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator. In regards to the Matrix contract, it was procured under a 2014, you missed it probably, it was procured under, as a task order, under a 2014 contract. I also sent a letter to the public auditor requesting an audit of that procurement, and he agreed, so he said he was going to begin one. So Senator Blas, you are recognized. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and to the panel, thank you very much for your testimony showing up today. Mr. Cabrera and Mr. Tenorio, the first time you heard about a hospital being proposed to be built on your ancestral, on your land, how'd you hear it?
Actually, it was on the news, I believe, where the governor mentioned that she's going to build a hospital and that, as far as she was concerned, that all the landowners at that time were compensated. That's the only first time that I can think back on what was going on.
So you had to rely on the news to be able to find out the fate of your property?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Leon Guerrero, with regard to the number of FOIA's, can you, can you give me a--
Okay, with GIDEA, I think I've got about--
Let me, let me, let me give you the specific question. The number of FOIA's that you had to put out relative, directly related to the medical campus?
Two to GIDEA, two to the governor's office, two to, three, four to Guam Memorial Hospital, no, six to Guam Memorial Hospital. That's it, about 10 FOIA's altogether.
Yep. A listing enumerating what--
I have a complete list with the responses from the responding agencies, and then I have an email trail. For example, I have an email trail with GIDEA's staff telling me that documents that I'm requesting, they will not release on advice of council.
Okay.
And I have similar documentation from council at Guam Memorial Hospitals that swear up and down that the invoicing and the travel arrangements for consultants are such high-level security that they can't entrust it to a mere citizen.
You think you can give the committee a rundown of all the--
Yeah, I can copy the committee with all my FOIA's and the responses. I won't bother them with the detail stuff, because, you know, like when you get, you know, like 900 pages of something, I'll just give them the cover letter, the FOIA, and the response.
Okay, thank you.
I'll submit that as part of my testimony.
Thank you. Ms. Vindiola, prima. I guess I've been listening here to a lot of the conversation, a lot of times, Matrix has come up. What is Matrix, the role of Matrix in this whole plan for the medical center?
Thank you for the question, Senator. Matrix was awarded renewal to their existing contract. It appears that Matrix has maintained an IDIQ type of contract with the government of Guam, specifically GIDEA, since the Camacho administration. The last time it was updated was in the Calvo administration. During the Calvo administration, they provided a doc, so Matrix has been the agent, the organization that's been contracted for things such as the Hagatnya, the historical Hagatnya Plan. So specific to this one, they, Matrix engaged in the medical action plan four years, 2016, I can get the exact year, but, and so, we, because the contract was, had remained active with Matrix, we engaged them again to update that plan in addition to expound on it and examine all the other documents associated with, with medical action or associated with the healthcare, with the healthcare industry, as well as undertake some new activities, so planning meetings and, and things along those lines. And so, all of that work has resulted in the medical action plan and accompanying reports, which are housed on our website, or the Guam Medical Campus website.
You say, it's interesting, you say that they're also in charge of, or tasked to also plan meetings, right?
Planning meetings, so holding planning meetings.
Or to hold planning meetings.
That's correct. Not plan meetings.
Okay.
That's an extra charge.
Okay, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of, you know, I look around the room and see the people that have come and gone in this hearing, and one of the things that I see here is that for a community that would like healthcare, it's such a monumental project for the island, that the government has failed to be able to tell the community what they want to do. I mean, you know, it's pretty sad when Mr. Cabrera and Mr. Tenorio have to hear the plight of their plans on the news, that's also, and in the news, it's also stated that they've, that the landowners have already been, this discussion has already been with the landowners, when in fact it hasn't. When Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero has to put at least, at least 10 FOIA's on information that I am sure, you know, that is going to be-- I am sure, you know, that is going to be, is going to be now all on the website, and he had to go through all that trouble and legal expense, when it shouldn't have been necessary. Okay? And then for you guys, you all, GITA, to be the only one sitting here to try to answer to a lot of the faults. I don't think that if things were, if the process was followed the way it's supposed to have followed, been followed, that Mr. Cabrera and Mr. Tenorio wouldn't have had to rely on K U A M to tell them what's the future of their properties, that Mr. Leon Guerrero didn't have to go through the legal action of FOIAs, and that you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to even sit there to be able to plan or to talk about these plans. This bill should be necessary. But because of these actions, because, ma'am, you're the only one that was, has the guts to be able to come and sit with us, to be able to plan this, when I know that, I think that, from what I'm hearing, a lot of this doesn't even have to deal with you. It's a sad day for the government. And we have to sit here, miss dinner, okay? And still, you know, because the other thing too is, that I'd like to be able to hear, and I know it's not germane to this, but, you know, just to put it out there. You know, this whole cause, it somehow went from $700 million to close to now $3 billion, and there's still no discussion, open discussion, on why? For a building, for a complex that we want to complete before the next gubernatorial Jeez.
Senator, it gets even worse when you consider the fact that as a result of Bill 1135, which gutted Guam Memorial financially with its passage and was later thrown out by the federal government, Guam Memorial's deficit has dramatically grown from 10 million a year to 50 million a year, and that's not going to get closed up. So now we have a hospital system that is costing taxpayers 50 million a year over and above revenue to operate, and then somehow we're going to add an $80 million a year lease-to-own option to it. And that doesn't include the bond payments for the infrastructure on roadways, water, sewer, power that are going to be required. So let's say there's another $2 billion or another $80 million a year. So we have a building that generates 150 million a year in revenue. It costs us 200 million a year to operate it in its present condition, and somehow we're going to magically generate another $160 million to throw at a building that's already losing 50 million taxpayer dollars a year. That's why we need to have this open government law strengthened so that we get as many people involved in the process as possible. Because when you look at the list of the committee members, I think with the exception of maybe four or five people, everybody in that committee is a government employee that reports statut.
Okay, thank you. Which brings up a question that I have here. Maybe somebody in the panel can, can answer this for me. If you want to buy a car, what's one of the first things that you have to take into
Whether or not I can afford it.
Thank you. Okay. It is kind of interesting that we're talking about wanting to build these whole things, and we haven't even pegged down how much this is going to cost. I think that's the greatest breach of this feat of, you know, having to strengthen this law. Okay? Because you know what's another scary thing? I haven't heard anything about wanting to compensate you for taking the land.
It's not about compensation, it's that we want the land back.
I know.
It's not the compensation at all.
And I appreciate it, Vince, because that's, somehow it looks like this conversation is being forced that way. Okay? And that's not appreciative, that's not part of a process that this government should operate under. We operate under working for the people, okay, with the people, not, okay, dictating to the people how it's going to happen. I support this bill. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. All right, that concludes the testimony and the questions from the panel on Bill Number 13-37. And so, as a sponsor, I just want to close by saying that I want to thank Senator Perez for reading out the open government law statement that's written in the intent of the bill, and that really is the intent of this bill. It's to, for the same reasons that the open government is important for every meeting of the government, that it should be important to meetings regarding the healthcare facility that may cost us over $1 billion, and that we've already entered into a contract for 1.48 million. I think we've seen over the course of two years that there are decisions being made and publicized, and that these, the deliberations on those decisions are not public, and I think it's very important. We're talking about not just landowners, but especially landowners, original landowners. We're talking about medical providers, and so we hear again in the media that there's, you know, a presentation to the Rotary, I think, saying that the doctors don't agree. But we've not seen those documents or that type of correspondence that was not in one of the public meetings. And so, these meetings, actions, decisions surrounding the design, the lease, and the financing of the proposed medical healthcare campus should include the stakeholders as proposed by the law and as in the existing law, and the meeting should be public. So I want to thank again all of you who've come here to testify and reemphasize this point and reiterate that the people of Guam should be involved every step of the way. And I want to thank you, Director Mendiola, for, you know, agreeing with parts of the bill, stating your, I guess, objection or disappointment to the other parts, but I do thank you that you're open to continuing to lead these meetings by the committee and, or the task force either, and that you are also open to the additional members. Again, I want to make it very clear, the Guam legislature is not opposed to the construction of a new hospital, at least the previous legislature was not, nor a medical complex. We do have questions. I think it's apparent that even the new senators continue to have questions. This dedication by the legislature to a new hospital is evident by the laws the body passed to establish the healthcare task force in the 35th Guam legislature, and again, in the 36th Guam legislature, that would lead this effort and authorize the government to enter into a contract for the design, build, finance, and lease, the transfer, and the long-term capital maintenance of a 21st century healthcare center. The law authorized funding from E I T C funds and F Y 22, which did not materialize, and also authorized up to $35 million per year in lease payments for up to 40 years on a lease-to-own basis. And that's why I believe that the decisions involving this project in this magnitude, they impact the lives and healthcare of our entire island, and they should not be made unilaterally nor behind closed doors. So I want to thank you all again for being here today. So there being no additional individuals to present testimony, the committee will consider Bill Number 13-37.
Madam Speaker, can I have just one question that I?
Sure. Senator Blas.
Sorry, Ms. Mendiola, prima. Has there been charrettes conducted for this?
As part of the Medical Action Plan, if you go to the Guam Medical Campus website and you see the different task orders, you will see the planning activities and charrettes that have been undertaken as a result of, that have resulted in the Medical Action Plan.
So there was, yes, there has been.
Correct. I mean, there were, with the, there's a specific section dealing with medical services that has taken place. I don't believe there's been like a construction charrette.
Okay, so just to clarify, there has been a charrette, but not for the process?
According to the governor's office, the Department of Administration in Guam Memorial Hospital, and Laleen Posadas, when she testified here last year, no charrettes have taken place.
The charrette, having said that, the charrette that Mr. Langor was referencing was the widely publicized charrette that was being offered up by the Army Corps of Engineers, and that they were subsequently going to charge the government of Guam $4 million or so to conduct. And so, what we said was, we don't have the budget for that right now. Let's start asking, let's see if we can get some grant funding to take care of that. We didn't have quite the budget, I believe, for it. So what we did was, we asked the consultant if they could incorporate some planning charrette type activities into the Medical Action Plan.
Just so, in the charrette process, does that process also include public input and notification?
There is a public input and notification portion at the conclusion of the Medical Action Plan, that's the, and so that's where we are now, and so I'm thinking we'll probably aim towards this, end of this month or next month.
So it hasn't been completed?
That's correct. I mean, there's...
Short answer, no, because there has been no public opportunity to speak on any facet of the 107 acre plan that has been presented to the media, complete with building layout, parking layout, land utilization, and there has been no opportunity for anybody to speak on it, and when I tried to get in on it, obviously I was arrested and thrown in jail.
To differentiate, I believe that meeting was not part of any kind of healthcare planning meeting, that was a G M H strategic planning meeting, so I think it, I feel badly that Mr. Leon Guerrero was possibly given wrong information in G M H, but that was not a meeting that we were aware of or a part of, and I believe it was part of their contract with a different consultant doing their long-term strategic plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The charrette that I believe Director Mendola is discussing is, is just the product, work product of Matrix in that contract that they have with Matrix. There was another charrette discussed for...
One charrette ends with T, multiple charrettes end in S. I saw in the video, she said S. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I guess, one of the surprises that has come up in this meeting is, Mr. Langor, you're putting together the different responses to FOIAs, and I find that very concerning, that we have government agencies claiming deliberative process exclusions, that they will not release on advice of council, that's not an exclusion, or that, you know, take me to court, I guess the one that Klitsky got. So, yeah, those are concerning as well. I've continued to discuss the open government law and the FOIA laws with both attorneys general, and I will do that again with the new, with the previous, and I will do that again with the new one, to see how else we can shore these up, because I agree with you, it should not be necessary to state in every law we pass that this should be subject to open government law. We've already stated that, that every meeting is subject. Okay, but hopefully this makes it very clear. So we will continue to accept testimony for the next five working days, that is until Monday, February 13. Testimony can be sent by email to senatorterlahi@gmail.com or hand delivered here to the Guam Congress Building from my office. And again, Cesar Massey told us. We're going to continue now, we've way beyond 6:00 P M. So the panel, you are dismissed, Cesar Massey, for attending, but we're going to continue now with the next hearing, which was supposed to begin at 6:00 P M., but we're running a little behind, but, so we're just going to continue right away. So again, in compliance with the open government law, notices for the hearing were issued on Monday, January 30, or published, and published on Friday, February 3, in the Guam Daily Post, and on the government of Guam public notice website. This hearing is being livestreamed on the legislature's YouTube channel, and notices were also sent to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on those same dates. All right. So again, agenda item number two is Bill Number 12-37. It's introduced by myself, Teresa M. Terlahe. It's an act to amend, Section 60112 of Chapter 60, Title 21, Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring prior approval from the legislature before purchasing or entering into a lease, license, or sublease of property owned by the federal government, foreign government, or subentities thereof, for a term in excess of five years. The bill was introduced on January 24, and subsequently referred on January 25, 2023. As sponsor, I'll give a brief statement on this. Pretty much, the bill is introduced, it's going to require that the government, if it is going to lease federal land, that legislative approval must also be obtained. This is because all federal land, and I call it, you know, in quotes, "federal land," originally belonged to families or the people of Guam. They became federal as a result of massive land takings after World War II. And since then, the leaders of Guam have consistently declared those land takings unjust. They have advocated for return of the land to the government and the original landowners. And currently, the military continues to hold one-third of land on Guam, and I believe it continues to be incumbent on us as a government, that while we ask for return of land on one hand, as we do, as we are mandated by law to do, and as we have done for years, for decades, that we don't concede, on the other hand, to land being kept that is not immediately necessary for military purposes. It's our duty as policymakers to ensure that contracts negotiated and entered into on behalf of the people of Guam are made public and transparent, not just through political pressure from the impacted stakeholders and residents, but by mandating transparency by law, so the people of Guam are aware of what is being negotiated on their behalf, especially when it comes to land agreements involving deals being made with federal government for the use of federal property at the cost to the people of Guam. And I just want to point out one example. For example, in 2011, instead of declaring Fena Reservoir as excess and giving it back, the Navy wanted to sell it back for $300 million to the government of Guam, and mandate that the Navy be included as a voting member, or members on the C C U. That same month, there was a march on Fena with both Democrat and Republican senators unified in demanding the return of land rightfully belonging to the people of Guam. And at that time, Governor Calvo also agreed in the State of the Island address that land should be returned and that the government of Guam should not have to buy it back. This bill also, you know, comes at a time when we are hearing in the media discussions of leasing for 99 years parcels of land in Magnilau back from the federal government. And 99 years seems to me to make it very clear, not only that that land is excess to the military at this time, they have no immediate need for it because they're willing to lease it for 99 years, but that, you know, they want, we don't see the agreement in front of us at this time, but, you know, that lease back means they want to charge us for use of this property. I especially do not want to see entering into leases as part of, with the federal government, as a way of negating our decades-long commitment to requesting and the process that has been established, to requesting excess land be returned, and being very firm about that, and pretty much putting the pressure on them to return these lands. That's the only way lands have been returned. It's not from the people of Guam sitting around and waiting for that to happen, it's because they've worked very hard to make that the record, the request, the law, the, you know, united fronts. It's one of the fronts that all, all of the people of Guam have united on, that is, if it's excess, that it should be returned, excess to the military, if the other section of the federal government... Excess to the military, if the other section of the federal government, for example, the wildlife refuge is not going to be handled as a wildlife refuge and, and the Department of Interior does not need that for wildlife refuge anymore, or has no intention of putting any more money into protecting the wildlife, then it, it should be treated as excess and returned as well. And as I stated earlier, we have an example before us where, where the military has said this land, what the Secretary of the Navy has said in this letter, this land is, he's including it, 100 acres, says excess should be returned to the government of Guam. I do not necessarily, I don't know what other leases are proposed, so I admit, I don't know all of them. I don't know what's being proposed, except for the ones I read in the media. And this is, this is the one example that is before us today. So I'm concerned that leasing for 99 years is, is precluding our, our net negative inventory of, you know, or the military's promise for net negative inventory, and it's precluding our request for that land to be returned as excess. This bill is similar to the requirement for legislative approval when government-owned real property is to be sold, leased, subleased, exchanged, or otherwise transferred. The reverse, in other words. When we are going to lease out government of Guam land, we also require legislative approval. I do not believe it's too cumbersome, not if we are open and we are able to act efficiently. Again, we went into the history earlier of FOIAs that had to be sent by my committee, by Mr. Leon Guerrero, by others in regards to, I'm still trying to see evidence of this 99-year lease. I am not able to get any of the documents relating to it from FOIA requests, from requests to these agencies, none. So that's why, that's another reason why I'm putting into law, or I'm trying to put into law, that legislative approval will be required so that that will mandate that this be opened up. And we see what the deal is actually going to be. Again, I think that's enough said on the bill for now. I'm going to open it up for testimony. Director Manjola, would you like to testify? You're recognized.
I'll keep my remarks short as we are, you know, going late tonight. But consistent with the mission of GIDEA, to build a sound and sustainable economy, we've consistently been against any impediments to the growth of our economy, and a big part is the advancement of healthcare. And so from the time I started at GIDEA four years ago, it was made known to me that the current five-year law, which you referenced just a moment ago, affecting government leasing out is detrimental to progress. We've been consistent in our testimony in favor of legislation proffered by Republican Senators Tai DeGuey Law, as well as Senator Moilen, to remove, repeal, extend the five-year law. And we've cited in letters, which, in testimony previously, which I will cite again, that existing laws already provide for agency directors and board members who are legislatively confirmed and presumed granted authority to act in their official capacities, to include the disposition or management of respective agencies' functions. And the required additional layer of legislative approval creates additional obstacles and delays for promoting economic activity in terms of planning, financing, marketing, investment, and development. So consistent with that, I'm here today not in support of this legislation. It is well-intentioned, I'm sure, as was the five-year law enacted approximately 10 years ago. Since 10 years ago, there's not been a single lease over five years with the government of Guam. There's been millions of dollars of missed opportunity that we can also document in my submission, my testimony submission. And I think it's difficult to ignore that this proposal was a reaction, of course, to the proposed construction of the health campus at Eagles Field. But I do want to make the differentiation that GIDEA is not the actual signer of the leases, the Office of the Governor is. And so I can't speak for the Office of the Governor, but that, as a part of the team, we have tried to come up with solutions, including the recently introduced, or the reintroduced bill, Land Bank Trust Act, legislation to offer compensation to original landowners whose land return may not be feasible in the immediate future. We believe that GIDEA has experienced a similar event when the legislature tried to dictate the terms of our qualifying certificate program. So the legislature can create the program, but, but the AG opined that it was an overreach to, I believe it was, I'd have to pull the letter, but it was an overreach for the legislature to determine the terms within the QC contract, since the contract is between the Office of the Governor and the QC holder. And we maintain consistent, that we are of, without any very serious legal examination, that this may face a similar type of fate. And third, or well, next, in GIDEA's experience, this is not the first federal lease that GovGuam has entered, which have included past properties, including Fena, as you had mentioned, as well as Gigo, where the fire station is located. I think there needs to be some examination of any properties wherein the government of Guam has a relationship with the federal government, because I would hate for any unintended consequences to then impede the, the process of continuing to the business as usual for other functions of the government agencies. But it could also educate and illuminate us for changes that need to be made. So I think it's, overall, it's a good thing to look at leases that we have with the Navy. I do think we need a little bit more time to do some, to examine something like that. Overall, at GIDEA, we are against barriers, and we see this as a barrier, and that's why we're not in support of this legislation. And that's, that's what I have.
Thank you very much, Director. Mr. Langorres.
I am very much in favor of this legislation, not just because of the current situation regarding the Guam Memorial Medical Complex out in Manila, but back in the 80s, Department of Agriculture leased 20 of acres of land to a farmer, and the farmer failed. And rather than return the land back to Department of Agriculture as required under the law and the terms of the lease, the Department of Agriculture and the head of Gedca at the time wrote a memo transferring administration of these 20 acres of land away from Department of Agriculture, land which would eventually have gone to Chamorro Land Trust. But by diverting it over to Gedca, it sat idle for nearly 20 years, and then it was leased to the Limteaco Egg Farm or the Manhita Farms for basically nothing. I think they pay a dollar a year for 20 acres of land. And then in the 33rd legislature, I think, Bill 156 was introduced to convert that, the remaining 27 acres of land to 99 years and give them subdivision and sublease rights, which would have effectively turned that 20-acre farm into maybe a $100 million real estate development, half a mile from Anderson Front Gate, one mile from Camp Blas. All this happened in back rooms behind closed doors. And had it not been for a FOIA that I executed and found how moral hazard of politics came into play and laws were broken by people appointed to positions of power and authority which diverted 20 acres of land out of public assets into private hands. That's why I'm in favor of this bill, requiring that all transfers of government property between the government of Guam and other entities, or between the federal government and government of Guam, have legislative review and approval, because that is the only way that some of these things are going to come to light. Because had I not done that FOIA on why, on Bill 156, we would have never have known that we had two directors of agencies break Guam law for personal gain for politically well-connected insiders. So I'm in favor of it. We need to have any land transaction, and there are numerous examples recently, up with Chamorro Land Trust, Baragata Heights properties. We have other Chamorro Land Trust properties that are sitting idle, have not been paid for, but are under the control of politically well-connected insiders outside of legislative oversight. So I, I love this bill. I think it is a, a must-do, because land is the basis for all wealth, and it's the basis for the wealth of all the families. Not that I ever expect to see a chunk of Fena in my lifetime, but it sure would be nice. But these people right here have a higher probability of being able to pass on their lands to their grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and I would be happy to see that day come to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Langorres. Mr. Tenorio, did you want to testify?
I support that bill, yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cabrera?
I am for Bill 1237. The key is legislative approval. There needs to be checks and balances when talking about excess federal land, especially when it deals with original landowners wanting their lands returned. It is very important to know the details concerning any lease of any land. Legislative approval is needed, for the most part, to make sure that circumventing the law to suit a person's agenda is not acceptable. There also needs legislation, for example, legislation approval to find out what to do with the public health building in Manila, when the only renovation needed was electrical versus now they're paying rent. So the building now is planned for GCC to use as a nurse training facility. I agree with the term limit of five years. It sounds better than 99 years, which almost sounds like forever. In closing, we need to have checks and balances to make sure no one branch would be able to control too much power. Again, I would like to restate that I am for Bill 1237. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cabrera. Is there anyone else who'd like to present testimony on this bill? If not, I will open it up for my colleagues. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And again, thank you for providing to, members of our public, for providing their testimony as well as GIDEA. I mean, I can understand from a business standpoint, perhaps, why there are those that have an interest in wanting to lease property for a longer period of time with regards to their investment. But I've always looked at the issue, if we're doing this with regards to public property. In this case, your bill is obviously almost a reversal of that. It's saying before we go out and lease private property, or even federal property, that the legislature have an input on that. And you know, the sad reality, and I've been at this a long time, I first entered these halls in 1995, so I'm kind of the oldest one here, at least in political time. Sad reality in our government, unfortunately, is we have those that have an interest in wanting to use public resource for their interest. I've dealt at the other end of the coin, where it's a question of private interests wanting to take over government property. And certainly in the port, our experience with that was YTK and the many, 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 many years of litigation until, you know, the Supreme Court of Guam determined that that lease was not valid because it did not come through the legislature for approval. The other case that I experienced during my tenure there was Cementon, where the lease actually did come through the legislature for approval. And that particular company took many, 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 many years before it actually came current at our insistence to end that contract, to actually pay the lease money that was owed. And it's not been a good history. I don't know if people take advantage of, of these resources because it's public money or public land, and, and we just don't have a sense of comfort. I don't, just because of my own experience. I'm very hesitant. I know there are always circling around us other interests that you don't see them. Some of us know who they are, but they very much feel that they have the right to control public assets. You just don't know them by name or face. And they try to influence that process if there's government resources that they want, or in this particular case, wanting to use public money, you know, to, to filter it their way. I don't know what the problem is in ensuring that when these leases are pursued for a longer period of time, it, coming forth for public review and public scrutiny. If it has the wherewithal, if a company has a legitimate proposal, then I don't see any reason why they can't bring that forth, if it's dealing with public money or public asset. If it's their private money and private asset, then I don't have a say, and they can do whatever they want, as long as it's legal with their, with their money. But we're talking about public resources, and I, you know, we don't have a good history, Madam Speaker, in our government with regards to that. It's unfortunate, but we don't. I mean, we so recently heard, last year towards the end of our term, about the interest in wanting to extend the leases at the Guam Airport to 30 years without legislative review and simply allow the board. And we had, you know, the representatives from the Guam Airport Authority telling us that we should believe in their integrity, that they, you know, their integrity is above reproach. You know, the track record to me and government shows otherwise, so certainly I would be supportive of this. Some may think it's limiting the ability of the government to operate, but when you see what is becoming now unilateral decision with regards to this, and let's get right down to the brass tacks, this particular proposal by this administration for this hospital complex, it's almost becoming a unilateral decision, and they are putting the pieces in place to ensure that it moves forward as they desire, or shall I say, the governor desires this issue to move forward. And I think something as big as this, something that is going to cost our people, we're all for good healthcare, who's going to argue that? How we get there and how it's paid for, and what's the impact on our community? I think we want it to be positive and not, not a negative one. And so I, I am supportive of this. Unfortunately, our climate has not showed us, and our history, unfortunately, the government has not shown us that we have a clean track record, and that's unfortunate. So definitely, I, I'm supportive of this, and I thank all of you for coming and providing testimony. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a comment, really. You know, first off, while I support the measure, I find it very disturbing that the measure addresses that lease of government, federal government property back to us, well, that has to go through this approved process. It's just lease of federal property. First, the federal government didn't own any property. They own the property. Okay? So when the government has to lease back property that they own, it's, there's something wrong with this. And so, and I appreciate and I recognize that you find different ways, a way to be able to, to deal with this. But it doesn't solve the issue. Again, this is, this is legislation that is as a result of which way they want to go with it. There shouldn't be a discussion about lease of federal property, it's your property, back to the government that you pay taxes to. If they wanted, you just ask him, ask you to pay the property taxes. These, the government gets something back from there. Anyways, again, goes to showing that this conversation is being steered in ways that is not transparent to the people. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fully support this measure, and I just got to say, it's sad that the legislature, both this and prior legislatures, have spent a lot of time trying to plug all the holes that this administration tries to ram things through, and other administrations, to be I think it's clear that this hearing and the one prior to it has shown that there's really only one person in this legislative building right now who knows a whole lot about this project, while everyone else is kind of guessing. Sitting senators are guessing. Sitting senators are trying to figure out, right, the good questions to ask and having really little to no information and not having access to your notes or really any other kind of documents that, any other project that, if it had been conducted in the light of day, there would be, I'm sure, volumes upon volumes, bibles even, of documents. I'm having a hearing tomorrow, GDOE, but I've got stacks and stacks of documents because they know the process. And it's just frustrating when we have to come up with bills to kind of reinvent the wheel, wheel. But we know what the legislature is here for, and we get people coming in saying, oh, they don't support it because it's getting in the way of this project that- because it's getting in the way of this project that really only a few connected people, what's it you say? You're always saying connected insiders, know about. That's what it seems, that's what the deal is. I mean, it's frustrating again for Mr. Tenorio. I'm pretty sure you'd rather be home watching your shows, or, you know, facuding the galago. 85 years old. Again, I commend the people who come to testify, Melanie. I know you're, you know, you were the tentago tonight to come and face the music. You got the tough job. You did it the whole time with a smile on your face. I don't really think it's funny, but, you know, I appreciate you being here and, you know, kind of being the messenger, if you will. I think that, yeah, this body deserves to get the answers from the people who have the answers. But, you know, more importantly, Mr. Tenorio deserves the answers, Mr. Leon Guerrero deserves the answers, Mr. LaGuatia deserves the answers. And it shouldn't be like pulling teeth to get them. But so be it. Again, Speaker, I thank you for coming up with not one, but two measures. I know that you and your colleagues in the previous legislature, and I'm pretty sure in this one as well, have been really doing your job to be that check and balance on this project, which is exactly why the legislature is here, as a separate but co-equal branch of government. We're not here to roll over and lay down and get steamrolled by the powers that be, just because they have a pet project that, you know, maybe it's so they can have a legacy, you know? We're trying to build a Lamborghini hospital on a B-210 budget. But I'm here for it. I'm here for it. I think if we got to come up with two more measures to kind of right the wrong and course correct, then so be it, again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Barnett. So, you know, again, yeah, thank you for your testimony, and I appreciate your comments, Director Manjola, regarding, you know, this has been the line for many years, that anything requiring legislative approval is going to be a barrier to business. I really do not agree with that, and I've been around, maybe as long as you, at least. And we have seen, as Senator Brown, put out some very good examples of where that has gone very wrong, like without, and really what the legislature's doing is just an additional layer of scrutiny for something that's going to go on beyond five years. Right? So we're talking about long-term leases. In some cases, 20, 50, 99 years. And for purposes that, in some cases, the legislature did not approve. It's not like, for example, we did this with submerged lands, right? We put out a purpose, and we said we would approve these in long term, because we scrutinized that. That purpose, that use of it, how much minimum they can bring in with it, that type of thing, like what the minimum deal would be. And we said, that looks good for the government of Guam. That looks like a fair deal for the people of Guam, and so we approved that. And then we delegate it to the Chamorral Land Trust. They, they're going to be the ones to find, do the negotiations, the leasing. But we did that big scrutiny of it. I don't see, yeah, unfortunately, we've seen the opposite. Without scrutiny, we've seen bad things. And not all across the board. Some of the deals are great, so not, but, you know, people change. So this is just a protection for the people, and it ensures that if the government of Guam, through one agent, one department, or, you know, one person, is making a decision to go beyond five years, to commit that we are going to pay beyond five years, that should be in the realm of the legislature. We're talking about appropriating in years beyond even the current fiscal year. And so I think those are, it's very important that if we're going to be liable for that, that we can scrutinize it in advance. And unfortunately, there is a little bit of a lack of transparency in some of these things, and not, not on you, but on, you're here, so I'm talking to you. But, yeah, there are, there are other agencies that currently have leases or propose to lease from the federal government. But this is, for me, even more important than the money that we're scrutinizing and the deal that we're scrutinizing. We are, when we say, and this is, this is in particular to federal government, right? When we say to them, we are going to lease that land back from you, the one that you possessed from us, that you, we have displaced people from, that, you know, you took, we're going to lease it back. Not only does that just sound and feel wrong, but it feels like, but it is like an admission on the government's part, that even though that looks excess to me, because you can, you don't need it for 99 years, it looks excess, but we're going to let you get away with saying it is not excess. And we have never, as a government of Guam, done that. We've always been the opposite. We've always said, what looks excess is excess. And that's how we are successful. And so I would like to just continue to do that, unless there's some other, you know, and that's what the legislature review would do. It would show why it's not excess, and there's actually a need to lease it for 99 years. So I don't think this precludes that, but it definitely, you know, would have to pass that type of scrutiny, that we're leasing for 99 years. Why, again, is that not excess? Yeah, that, just answer that, like, so, you know, so that everybody will know the deal, and we don't get stuck with the bad deals, the examples that have been brought up by the actions of one or two directors. No more. And that legislative scrutiny, it's a good thing. It's like, you know, you're the businesswoman, I'm a businesswoman as well, before I took this job. That's what we do. We scrutinize, we negotiate, we make sure we're going to get a very good deal. And I, you know, I think we, there is a law that currently lays out that process, and I think it's a very good one. It makes you say, why does your lease have to go beyond five years? And, you know, what are the protections in it? And so it's a matter of protecting the people of Guam. It's a matter of making sure that we're not undercutting the justice that we are seeking in, for decades, and for, you know, in all other ways. And so that's it. Not meant to be a barrier to anything. I don't believe it will be a barrier, and this just promotes transparency as well, the transparency that we've been talking about in, you know, in the bills today, and transparency that we've been lacking in prior, prior transactions with the government. So thank you again to my colleagues. Thank you for your being here with me tonight. Thank you very much, Director Manjola. Thank you to Mr. Leon Guerrero, Mr. Tenorio, Mr. Cabrera. Thank you to those who are here with us. We have representatives from the ancestral lands here in their personal capacity, but sidus masi to all of you who are here. And this concludes the hearing on Bill 12-37. We will accept testimony for five working days until Monday, February 13, here at the Guam Congress Building, or via email to senatorterlahi@guam@gmail.com. This public hearing is adjourned. The time is 7:45 PM. Sidus masi.